Okay, good evening and welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Thursday, February 12th, 2015. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will begin the meeting with the approval of minutes. We have regular session minutes of January 22nd, 2015, budget and finance minutes of February 3rd, 2015, governance minutes of January 22nd, 2015, as well as acceptance of warrants 31V-15, 33V-15, and 32P-15.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, we don't have our student rep this evening. It might be because of the weather. I appreciate everybody that came out. I think this little storm wasn't expected. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to talk about anything on the agenda? Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move right along into the recognition of one of our 10th graders at the middle high, at the high school, Christopher Pitcher and his family.
Come on up, Chris.
And Mr. Messina if you could come on up too.
Yeah, come on up Anthony. Sure, right there. That's perfect.
Does your dad want to come up too?
Yeah, Christopher's welcome.
Want to come on up? Okay.
The more the merrier.
I was perusing through the paper last week and I came across that wonderful article about you and it didn't surprise me. So I immediately notified the superintendent and she was thrilled too.
Yeah, I read it too. I'm like, we gotta do something about this.
She wasn't surprised. So I was so happy that you decided to come and I'm glad that Mr. Messina came too.
Yeah, absolutely.
So why don't you just tell us about this recognition, the Trudy Larson Award?
Basically what the Trudy Larson Fund is, is it's a scholarship for young musicians that are part of the Northeastern Massachusetts Youth Orchestra that I'm part of. And it gives them money to be able to upgrade their instrument to something a little better than what they're playing on. Or have an instrument of their own if they're playing on one owned by the school system that they're part of. So I wrote an essay describing what music has meant to me, what I've done through the NIMIO Foundation, and like the financial need for it. And I had ended up winning the scholarship, which was really awesome.
That's great. And it was a thousand dollars?
Yes, it was a thousand dollars.
Towards your instrument. So how much does your instrument cost?
The one that I got was normally $2,900.
Wow.
Yeah. And um...
They're expensive. You're a trumpeter, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
I had bought a Bach Stradivarius, which is a top-of-the-line professional instrument. And they can be pretty costly. And thankfully that grant allowed me to shave off some of the money from that and be able to actually make the purchase.
Wow, that's awesome, Chris. That's just great.
I mean, I go to all the concerts and I go to the Memorial Day parades and, you know, you can't go to anything without seeing Chris featured. You know, he is one of, I would say, I put in your notes, I think he's one of our talented, most talented musicians that I've been aware of in my eight years here.
He's definitely a positive addition to the band program and really to the music program and school community as a whole, you know. I think about graduation with the trumpet volunteer at the beginning and there's Chris at the, you know, the front row.
Yeah, and he does the solos.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, you know, always willing to sort of do that extra. And it's not easy to put yourself out there all the time. But I know how much the town really appreciates hearing you play taps.
Oh, it's such a movement.
At all of the ceremonies.
Yeah. No, you're very impressive.
Thank you.
You are. And the taps especially like when you go behind the fire stand, like all of a sudden you hear it and you're like, where is it? It's just beautiful. It is.
I mean, we have a wonderful music program. It's something we're, one of our most prized, you know, programs. But, you know, we do as often as we can like to recognize students who we think, you know, have just something a little special. And, you know, when Barbie asked, you know, what do you think about having him come and inviting Anthony and his family? You know, we just wanted to do it as a way to show you how proud we are of your work and your efforts and what you bring to the music program and how you support the community as well.
And we're grateful. We're grateful.
We're very grateful.
Absolutely.
So we have just a little, we're just gonna give you a little certificate and then you can put it in your room. And it just, you know, it says in recognition of being awarded this, you know, this, you know, Trudy Larson Instrument Fellowship. Just as a little token of, you know, our recognition of your efforts.
Okay, so I'll give you that. So, Mr. Messina, how many trumpeters, trumpeter's are there?
In the high school, we have eight trumpeters right now.
Okay.
And Chris sits first chair. We do auditions at the start, at the fall. And based on those, he took first chair. Two years in a row, I believe, as a freshman came in. And he's just always been, you know, a positive influence in the group and in the section. And sometimes we break into sectionals, which is like, so just the trumpets are working together and just the clarinets are working together. And section leaders lead that. So he's led them during those, you know, a lot of pride opportunities for leadership within the ensemble. So they, you know, he's really stepped up. And he's also our drum major, one of our drum majors for the marching band. He's gonna be leading us down Main Street in Disney and so we're very excited that, yeah, so. Just a lot of, lot of good things going on in the program right now. And, you know, like you said, you know, instruments are pretty costly.
Yes, I couldn't believe that.
Yeah, you know, even intermediate instruments run probably around $1,500 for just the beginning band instruments, trumpet, flute, clarinet, things like that. So instruments like tubas and Barry, you know, Barry sax I just priced out as, for an intermediate model is $5,500.
Wow.
So, you know, that's usually where the district steps in and helps out with those things. But, yeah, I mean, we're very proud of Chris and we're very proud of the work that he's done and will continue to do as going forth, so.
Yeah, very impressive child.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for coming. Chris and thank you for your family coming out too. Thank Anthony for giving you time to come.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Alright, thanks so much. Thanks for coming.
Off to a music parents meeting.
Alright.
Thank you. So also, you know, in a, in a positive student celebration, you may have known that the PTA had sort of organized what one of the give-backs they call them to the Monarchs game in Manchester, Manchester Monarchs game. And Tyler, actually, why don't you come up? Because you could, you could give us some information on this. And Tyler did an amazing amount of work to get it to happen.
I couldn't have done it without the PTA president, Jill Shaw.
Yeah, Jill did great. But they had 50 kids, right?
Fifty kids between preschool, all the way up through fifth grade.
I know. And they, so, yes, a couple of days ago, we were emailed, a few of us were emailed. I think I might have mentioned something to Jill that she said, oh, let me send it to you. And I was so like proud and touched when I saw it to imagine, you know, 50 kids, you know, singing in front of this professional hockey audience. And I thought it would be really great to just share it with you and the public and, you know.
Yeah, it was a really neat experience for the kids to be able to be a part of that and to be able to get back.
I definitely want to recognize Tyler's efforts because Jill made a point to say he did a ton of work on it, so that is...
She did a lot of the phone calls and things.
Yeah, she's great. She's a doer.
It made it a lot easier just for me to focus on the kids, getting the kids around and practicing and things like that.
Yeah, it's very short, but, you know, I just think it's, God bless America, right? So it's kind of fitting, you know, with pleasure allegiance and all that stuff. Our intention initially was to do it right after that, but this'll be fine. So Julie very nicely downloaded it and I guess Peter's providing the adapter cord, so it's a team effort here. And Chris is gonna come out and help us with whatever technical information we need. Okay, so they had an honor guard.
Attention to the 101 platform where the Georgetown chorus will be singing "God Bless America."
Thank you.
(Singing) God bless America, live that I love, stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above, from the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home.
Isn't that great? That was very good. Yeah, I just think that was just, it really made my day. I know. Well, we always want to try to, we're gonna talk about budgets and, you know, it's nice to bring, you know, some remembrance that the reason we're doing all of what we're doing is because of that, because of the kids, so.
It's all for the kids.
I thought it was a nice thing to, thank you Julie for doing that and Tyler again for all of your efforts in that way.
Must have been a fun day for the kids.
For preparing.
Yeah, I had to be home that weekend, but I would have definitely signed up because, well, of course, I love hockey. My boys played all their life, but, but I was sad to miss it, but I was thrilled to get the video, to get the tape. That just was awesome.
Oh, that's good. Great. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Okay, we have senior celebration.
Come on up. Yes. Yes, you do.
We'll try to make it painless.
It made me think, like, my twins were like that age.
At some point they were.
Oh, my goodness.
No, they're not anymore.
As yours.
As mine, I know. And so I'm especially appreciative of everything you do.
It is an interesting year, senior year.
It is. It's scary.
Yes, very much.
Can you introduce yourself?
I am Kim Wykert-Moner. My kids are Jinsina and John Moner. And they've been in Georgetown forever. And we know the Lundquist and...
Very well, yes, yes.
I'm Denise Demento, Robert Demento's mom. He's a graduating senior. And I told him I was going to help with the senior celebration and he said, as long as I don't go.
Yeah. Yeah, well, they don't know that I think I'm going, that they don't know, so.
Sometimes it's best just not to, you know.
Well, you know, the thing is, is one of us has to stay home because we have the dogs.
But it is a lot of work, so we appreciate all the time that you put in to make their senior so special.
Well, the thing is, I think Ethel Di Pasquale has done the most and, yeah, she has.
She always did with football and anything that's going on. She's wonderful.
Very much.
I would love 20% of her energy.
Yeah, me too. But my kids are in hockey, so they, you know, they go to the, you know, the co-op, so.
Exactly.
You know, I don't know the, all the football wrestling, you know, and everything that is the fundraising, so. Yeah, I'm kind of like in the dark.
So what are you planning?
Well, okay, what do we have here?
It's kind of mirrored off of last year. It was difficult to get a committee together, so they were mirroring off of last year, the whitewater rafting trip. And they were going to, they wanted to get approved so we could start raising money for it. And again, same as last year, they wanted to have permission to sell plants at Easter time, a bake sale, sell lollipops, sporting events, a raffle, and to send letters out to the local businesses to see if people will be willing to help to bring the cost down for everybody. From what I'm told, the buses are quite expensive and they're having a difficult time with that where it is late getting a start.
Yeah, we didn't get the coach buses, right?
Right, right. So we're working on that. So there's a lot of, a lot of...
The hypnotist?
Yeah.
Oh, you do the hypnotist?
Yeah. I mean, then we have to have a police person there.
Yeah, we have to have a...
And they donate their time.
What is the hypnotist? Aren't we behind on, isn't, wouldn't that have already have happened? No?
I don't know. Usually it's in March.
That's right. It's usually in March.
Yeah. I don't know. She's got raffle for 18 holes of golf. I don't know what that...
Somebody must have donated.
What it means.
Car wash.
A ball thing that'll be part of the raffle. I think another thing is we could probably get additional raffle items if they're gonna do a raffle. Maybe they could do that with the hypnotist.
Yeah, they just have to make sure they go through the town. I'm sure Ethel will know that because she's done it before.
Right. Yeah, with Derek.
Maybe asking for coins too, because I remember when the kids were little, you know, the PTA always had the classroom coin collection. But now that we're not doing that anymore, I've got this huge collection.
That would be a hit. That would be a...
But the thing is, is like they, but the kids can't do anything during school, is that...
That's why you, that's why you would come here.
Right.
Is if you were going to solicit the staff and the students during the school day.
Yeah, and I think that everybody's saying that when I...
They don't want to do that.
That's right. Yeah, so you're gonna raise funds, but it's gonna be the way others do it.
Through business, yeah, yes.
Through businesses and selling things at like basketball games and whatnot.
And that's a hard thing because...
It ends tomorrow.
Well, my hockey stuff is not, but I have to give to that too, hello. We have the bake sale at Georgetown and, you know, at the Crosby's.
Bake sales do great. Bake sales bring a lot of money.
Plus is the prom and the frolics, the frolic and the dances coming up. They think they might be able to sell some lollipops and different things.
We already have $60 from the lollipops in our fund. Tracy Wood, she's like, she's like the lovely pop queen.
It is amazing how it comes together though. It is amazing how it comes together.
It will come together.
Well, and we're just kind of trying to like put out to the parents that it's probably gonna be $200 if we don't get funds. Do you know what I mean?
That's right. And you can do that.
And if they want to go, they go.
Right, it's not a school sponsor trip. It's something that the parents do in addition, sort of as a special for people who want to go.
Yeah.
Yep. So I'm sure Ethel knows all about this because again, we've, this conversation we've had in the past. But it has to do with, so it's not a school-sponsored trip.
Right.
But, so you want to make sure that your, that your organization, your group has, is protected if something were to happen.
Right.
So I believe that we had our attorney draft for you in the past of a release. So you ask people to sign a release.
Okay.
That basically kind of indemnifies you so that, you know, somebody gets hurt, they don't come back and say, well, you know, you're responsible.
Right, just like the rafting company, they have a release they sign. We can have them, with that, when they sign that, have them sign that as well at the same time before they get on the bus.
That's right.
Well, and also the, I think the laundry bags that they bring in their own stuff and then we go through that. And they said, yeah, you try, you know, I mean, I mean, because it's supposed to be non-alcoholic, non-drug.
That's right. That's right.
How has it worked out in the past?
It's been a very, we haven't had issues in the past.
Seems like, I know Missy Bjork, she posted a lot of pictures. It seemed like they had the time of their lives.
They do, they do. It's a very popular, they have fun.
Yeah, and I think the, I think last year the weather was horrible, but they still...
Right, right, yeah.
I love going. I wish that Robert wouldn't mind if I went. I love, I go whitewater rafting all the time. It's just very...
Come on, just play bass one, I'll go with you.
I'm pretty sure he won't. But that's okay. It's just fun knowing they're having fun.
Well, I think it's great.
Yeah.
I think it's great that you have... So how many people do you have in your committee between you two and then us?
Six, six or eight, eight.
Well, that's good.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think we've got a good group that, you know, is gonna be responsible for doing things that we need to do.
Right.
And Ethel, she's them.
Oh, she, yeah, she's great.
And other people now, now that there's a basic committee formed, other people are saying, oh, if you need help.
Yeah, coming on board, but they don't mind helping.
Then reach out for help, wouldn't they?
Yeah, I think the whole thing was like, I mean, nobody stood up. And I, like, I was the one, I was like, my husband says, what the hell are you doing? Pardon my language. And, but then, then everybody just, you know, yeah, came on board.
No one wants to be that, you know, the leader of it. You have plenty of people that I'm sure will help, right Pam?
Yes, that's right.
Could you sign Pam?
Pam, come on. You're not my number.
I've told you I will do whatever I can do. And I'm sure, you know, once everybody goes and has a fabulous time, your husband will be thanking you up and down.
No, he's not gonna go.
No, he's not gonna go, but he's gonna say, you know.
Not if Robert has anything to do with it.
He's gonna be appreciative that you've worked so hard to make it all happen.
Well, you know, I guess I have the twins. It's kind of like I felt like that I wanted to be a part of their senior year. Because, I mean, by God, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be an empty nest.
I know, it's gonna be very odd.
Yeah. Yeah, but you've got the...
I'm still gonna be going from, you know, three to two and it's gonna be different.
You know, the dynamics change. There's no doubt about that.
But we don't have to do any approval.
No.
Because it isn't...
We don't, that's good, because I'm going to be soliciting.
We sort of have gone back and forth with this over the years. The committee used to approve the trip. And if it's an overnight or an out of state, they would, if it was a school-sponsored trip, they would approve it.
Right.
If you were gonna solicit staff and students during the school day, you know, there's a policy about that, they would approve it.
Okay.
But since you're really not doing either of those, it's really just nice to have you come and give information to the committee. But they don't need to take a formal vote on it.
Okay.
Well, it isn't overnight.
It isn't overnight, but it's not school-sponsored.
Right.
So that's the difference.
Where are you going? What, in New Hampshire?
Maine.
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 Bangor, Maine.
Bangor.
Oh, Bangor, oh, wow. Is that where they've always gone?
It's a three and a half hour trip.
Yeah, that's, that's far.
This is substantial. Well, and we didn't get the coach buses, so...
It's gonna have some high waters this year, that's for sure.
Yeah, with the snow.
Usually, usually I bet they're like class two. I bet you this is gonna be three, four with all the water.
I'm not going on that one. I'll go, but I'm not gonna go on that one.
Oh, they'll have a blast. I find it safer when the water's higher because...
Well, you, you've done it before?
Well, yeah, because it's not as rocky. What's dangerous is when they hit the rocks, it's gonna be a blast.
I did in Colorado.
I have whitewater river rafted. Yeah, it's, I'm not sure if I'll do it again.
But it was on your bucket list and it's done, right?
Well, I mean, yeah, I said, I said, done it. We'll see, we'll see.
Okay.
But, so do you need anything else from us, like, like the fundraising things?
I think you ran through the ones that you're gonna do. I mean, obviously if they're gonna affect the school, you know, that you want to run it by the principal, Peter, to make sure that, you know, there's not an interference with other things that are going on.
Right.
You know, their fundraisers, maybe that classes are counting on doing a certain week, you don't want to be competing.
Or like if you're doing a bake sale and, you know, another group is doing a bake sale, you might not want to...
So they don't need any special permits or written permission to send the letters out to the local businesses and...
We, no, no, if you wanted to send something out to families, parents, then you, you would send it to my office because I approve everything that goes out.
Right.
But, you know, you're, you're sort of your own entity. So you, whatever you feel you need to do, you can do. But I would just make sure that you get whatever permits the town expects you if you're running raffles. Because that can get you into a little trouble if you don't.
Like the iPad thing.
Yeah, you want to make sure you follow those procedures.
Yeah.
You don't want anybody coming and saying you're violating tax laws or anything like that, so.
Well, good luck with that.
Well, yes, thank you for stepping up and doing it. I think it sounds great.
And thank you for coming out in this weather.
Yeah.
Thank you for telling us.
It's great to see you.
So since you've been in this room, have you heard about the Tuesday storm after Saturday and Sundays?
I heard Saturday and Sunday, I didn't hear Tuesday.
Oh, Tuesday, there's another foot coming.
I got my sister out, I'm good.
But it's vacation week, so I don't have to cancel schools, so.
That's kind of a long-term...
No problem.
They're sending in more equipment from New York.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
More snow melters and they're trying to find more snow farms. But, yeah, there's another one right behind them.
I heard that Wednesday was, could be rainy, so that all the snow that's on people's roofs is gonna get four times heavier. So the need to roof rake, just as a pump.
Well, we did that every day since last week.
But Pennsylton has been cold the whole week.
The whole week, yeah.
No, and my, my son plays for, you know, hockey for Pennsylton and they took, they, they still have, you know, practice, but...
Yeah, well, we, you know, we definitely were ahead of that game because obviously once you have a roof collapse, you don't want to ever see that again. So we, we, we actually, before the last storm, we had made arrangements to, to get all the snow off the roofs. And then we actually cleared the courtyards at Pembroke so that, you know, the air ventilation, fresh air was, was there, so, you know.
So are you all over all schools?
Yes, we're all schools. Yeah, we're all schools. But we have a wonderful maintenance. We're busy, but we have a maintenance director, Mike Anderson, who does just a wonderful job. And he works very collaboratively, Peter Durkey, you know, I can't, I gotta give a shout out to Peter Durkey and his, his guys and then whoever he contracts with because if I say I'd really like to get a two-hour delay, they do what they have to do to make it happen, you know. I mean, a couple of times we were in by ourselves, but, you know, at the end of the day, it worked out okay. So, you know, we, we just, we work in a, we work in a great town that has a lot of great people that are committed to working together, so. Yeah, so we, we weren't in an unsafe situation with our roofs because we had done it ahead of time.
Yeah, and it's excellent because you got them to go to school.
That's right, that's right.
Not that they really wanted to.
I know, I know that I wasn't 100% popular, but in June I might be more popular.
You will.
Not with the seniors.
Yeah, because they don't care.
That's right, the seniors, when I go to school, they're, Mrs. Jacobs, I think I smell a snow day on Tuesday. Do you? Well, you won't want to be here and ju, well, I won't be, I'm a senior. Oh, okay, I get it.
We don't care about that.
So you're not really caring about that, huh? So, yeah, it is kind of funny. The kids are great. But, but thank you so much. We appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So we're good to go then?
You're good to go.
Okay.
Stop fundraising.
Does anybody want to buy a lollipop?
Wish us, wish us luck with that one.
Reach out for help.
Damn, nice to see you, honey.
Great to see you too.
Thank you.
Okay, we have the budget presentation?
We do. Okay, so let's start with our binder. Cover, new Pembroke School. We usually use Student artwork, which we love to do. But in this case, we're using the architect's rendition of the new Pembroke School because that's obviously a big thing that's gonna be happening, the opening of the school this next year. So, well, I think maybe the best thing to do, but you tell me, because it's really your review of the budget, is to just kind of briefly review my, the contents of my letter. Because that sort of gives an overview and then talk about some of the assumptions that we use to build the budget. And then we can certainly, we go through however you want to. If you just want to go section by section, we can definitely do that.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
Okay. And just reminding everybody, we have this meeting. And then we have next, the 26th, we have a public hearing on the budget at 6:45, so people would come in and if they wanted to make a comment. And then the right, you have the discussion on the regular meeting on the 26th. And then the adoption of the budget would be at that special meeting we set on March 5th. So of course, you still can discuss it further if you need to even on that meeting, but that's when the, right now, that's what's scheduled. So we're waiting to hear from FinCom because they're doing that marathon Saturday session that they do with the departments. We haven't been scheduled into that day in the past, but I'm hearing rumors that we might be. So that's March 7th, right? And, but they don't have a time, they don't designate time, so you kind of gotta go and, I'm not sure anybody wants to follow the school budget. So I don't know if we'd be first or last, but I don't know. We'll have to see. Like I said, or they may want to see us separately like they've done in the past. So we just wait for direction on that.
Okay.
Okay. So the operating budget for the schools in FY16 will be $13,912,226. That actually represents a 2.46% increase over this fiscal year. So initially when we were given directives from the town, they said, well, give us a level services budget. And then if you want something beyond that, like remember last year we asked for the tech director? So that was above level services. So they said, just be prepared to defend it. Okay, so, you know, we began to, to start to do that. And then kind of the next word that came down was, well, but we really want you to be at two and a half percent. Because this particular year, the taxpayers, you know, really are trying to look for a little bit of a break. And if everybody overall could sort of stick within that, it would be great. And of course, as I say in my notes, we're grateful to the town for all of the things they've done over the last four years, including the operating override, which, you know, people, since taxes increased for that, then of course, the new school and the renovation at the high school. So we, you know, we understand that, you know, people are feeling an increased burden. So, you know, as an administrative team, we have worked really hard and Lorene and Michael as the Budget and Finance Subcommittee have also, you know, reviewed the budget and we've had discussion. We, you know, we, we did our very best to get to two, 2.5%. And to ensure, because remember, we're making a transition, so there are transition expenses as well, to make sure that we're not substantially cutting any programs and services, that we're, we're tightening our belts in some areas. And there, there is some, some slight reductions in some places, definitely. But we're feeling like those reductions are not gonna have a drastic impact on programs and services overall. If we have to cut deeper, then, then we are starting to go into things that are gonna have a more substantive response. So, impact, right. So when, when we break the budget down, the overall budget request I just told you was, you know, 13, 9. Usually what the FinCom will ask us for, because obviously when they look at all the pages, they're like, oh, that's all very nice, but what's the increase? So we, you know, they, so they want to know salaries, non-salaries, and... So we, um, you know, they, we, so they wanna know salaries, non-salaries, and special education, because they do understand that special education sometimes has, um, you know, impact on the budget that's a little harder to sort of quantify or control. So, um, the salaries increase in this budget, they're gonna be eleven million, eight, one, ten, five oh three, and that's a four point four percent, four point four six percent. The non-salary items are one million, two, three, seven, one, nine, and that actually represents a decrease of five point oh five percent. Uh, and, and you, we'll go into the budget, and you'll be able to see in each budget line, if something's been reduced in the rationale for that. And then the special education budget, um, is eight hundred and eighty-six thou- the increase is eight, eight hundred and eighty-six thousand, four dollars. It is a minus ten point seven two percent increase, but I wanna make something really, really clear at the outset, that, that does not, that's usually, that's special ed tuition and transportation for students who need to go outside the district. That does not mean that the expenses are down, and when you get to the special ed section, you're gonna notice the special ed expenses are actually up. But if you remember, we have circuit breaker funds, which are the reimbursement funds for extraordinary expenses for special education students that meet a certain threshold, and we have a balance in circuit breaker. So our intention is to do what that money is for, which is to offset some of those costs. So, it's gonna be in the budget, a minus ten percent, but it's not a minus ten percent in actual expenses. It's because we have an ability to offset with circuit breaker, okay? In order, and we're doing that, obviously, to hit the two point five percent, right? Um, okay, so, you know, there's a few different nuances in the budget, 'cause it's not as simple as just, uh, you know, building a level services budget, because we're, we are opening the Pembroke School, so there does need to be some redirection of some resources. So, if we turn to page two, I sort of detail for you what those features are. So, the increase in salaries that, that you see, for the four point four six percent, um, is caused by a couple of things. Um, the way, you know how it's structured, we have step and scale for people until they get to step eleven, and then beyond that, it's just the percentage increase for teachers that works. So, um, with, we have a lot of young teachers, which is, has been great, but until those teachers get to step eleven, there's a, there's a step in, there's a step that they get, which is actually a small built-in increase, in addition to the overall percentage increase. So, because we have more of those young teachers, the step and scale, uh, piece, you know, increased. And now Massachusetts certifications are that, when we hire people, we're hiring people generally with a master's degree, because once, once stu- uh, teachers, it's part of their certification process, they must have a master's degree, within a certain period of time. In the past, you might see teachers, we'd hire them at a bachelor's, one, two, three, now, it's really masters, one, two, three. So that, that's an impact to the budget, obviously, because they're at a higher, higher, uh, pay scale. Um, we, there are a couple of new positions, which we're gonna show you, uh, in the budget, and then there's, you know, contractual raises for union and non-union employees. So once all, we total all that up, the increase was four point four, four, four point four six percent. Special education costs, I just explained that to you, so I don't need to re- revisit that again, and then the, the new positions. So, given the fact that we're not closing the Pearly School, if we're closing the Pearly School, we just shift all the resources over, some of them we might not need, we would reduce them, but we're not doing that, we're keeping the Pearly School open. And the plan, so that means that there are some positions that need to be maintained there. We will maintain all of our preschool programs, um, we will, our plan that we're gonna propose to you is that we want, we'll have two, two additional rooms in that hallway, that preschool hallway, 'cause the kindergarten's going to Pembroke. So our plan is to hire, to increase by one preschool. That was something we talked about at Budget and Finance, and Margaret and I have talked about it extensively. Um, and the, the purpose for that would be that we would first, because we anticipate with the lottery that's coming up, that we may have people on the lottery, we can't fill, we, they can't get a slot. So if there's a waiting list, the first priority would be, for the new class, would be to give the waiting list people the priority. And then we, then we'd see if our teaching staff has, and, and it's, all of our staff, not just our teaching staff, but our staff, has any preschool children that, you know, would like to, to join our, our program. And then we would open slots to other people, assuming there's no other Georgetown people that wanna ha- have the opportunity. We would open it up to, um, you know, residents of local towns, because what we're hearing is that there's not necessarily enough preschool opportunities for people in this area, so if we can help out with that, if we have spots available in a class we're opening, then why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we do that? But the first priority is and continues to be Georgetown families.
So in years past, how many, um, people have we had to turn down at preschool?
Well, it varies from year to year, um, you know.
I just want a number.
Well, what would you say?
Well, it does depend, generally after the lottery, we might have maybe seven.
Yeah, I was gonna say, five, seven, yeah.
But, since we do it in March, and I always say to people, there is so much movement through the spring. Families move, um, you know, situations change, and so, we're, it, it generally works that we, you know, we start the year with not very many people at all, you know, two or three.
And, you know, someone, two someone, three someone, five, so, you know, sometimes people sign up for five, but can only do two. So there, there, and there are people who move in over the summer, that.
But you're confident that this extra.
Will fill.
Will fill.
Mm-hmm. But, that's our, that's our expectation. Um, so that would be one, and then the other is, there's an additional room, and, um, the plan, and we would come back in March with a formal plan for this, but our, our interest is, uh, we have a strong interest in creating a faculty daycare, which would, uh, allow our fac- we have a lot of young teachers that are having children, um, so we, if we can provide a, a program, you know, in our district for them, that's an incentive for them, that's, you know, they can be more comfortable with their children here, and it would probably be, we'd, we're deciding it, but it might be like, you know, ten to, uh, twelve to fifteen people, just a couple of infants, and then probably through grade three, because usually, when kids get to three, you know, people are making decisions about preschool and all of that.
So three years old, not four years?
Yeah, three would probably be the, the top age, but.
Can I just ask, if this, uh, wa- other classroom was successful in the next year, would we even have a lottery? If we had enough space for everybody, it would a lottery be necessary?
You never know if you're gonna have enough space for everybody till they come to the meeting and sign up. Right, so if we don't need a lottery, we, we wouldn't have one, but it seems that in, we've needed one in the past.
Well, and the other, the other fair thing that happens with a lottery.
'Cause we don't know necessarily that we're gonna have that other class yet.
Sorry?
'Cause we don't know necessarily that we're gonna have that other class yet. I mean, it sounds like a great plan to me, but when we had the lottery this year, we don't, we didn't know.
Well, I, I think we're thinking with, um, staff, with teachers and staff, there are children, you know, we, we know just anecdotally, when we've discussed it, um, we have several families that indicate interest.
Okay.
So the other, the other fair thing that happens with a lottery is, um, that it takes out of the equation, who signs up first?
Yeah.
You know, there are only s- so many spots, you know, you have Monday through Friday, but then you've got Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or Tuesday, Thursday.
Oh, right.
So, if you don't have the lottery, then it's, you know, well, I got my money in first, but it, it just, I have found that since we've done the lottery, there have been very few, if any, issues.
That resolves those issues, okay.
That's been eliminated.
Okay. So, we're interested in doing a faculty daycare, of which we would, you know, provide information for you, so you could see how it'd work. Our goal is to do it in March, because we, we really wanna respect the fact that people would be looking now for those kinds of services. And we don't wanna wait until June and say, "Oh, and by the way, we have this opportunity that nobody can take advantage of, because they've committed somewhere else."
So were you going to other districts that have that now, and just seeing like how that program runs?
Well, we actually have gotten information, uh, on a couple.
Okay.
Um, so, we're also doing some research on, you know, what is the right price? You know what I mean, because we, we're not, we're not doing it to make a.
A ton of money.
A ton of money off our teachers, but we are, we are, it is a revenue generator, absolutely, but it's not, you know, we, we certainly don't wanna charge our teachers more than the sort of the going rate and what's fair and right, so. We're, we're trying to do some salary comparisons and some, look at the staffing patterns and all of that. That's why we don't have it ready for you now, 'cause that's something we're, we're doing as an ongoing basis. Um, the other thing that Donna's researching is, um, uh, we have students who are getting to the age, you know, our, our autism spectrum, ASD programs, at the high school that are getting to the age where they're, they're needing an eighteen to twenty-two year old program, 'cause special education law requires that students have the opportunity to, uh, you know, have schools, public school services, uh, until their twenty-second birthday, um, unless they graduate.
Unless they graduate, right.
But in this case, you know, if, if the children don't graduate, and then other districts have the same need. So, um, we've been, you know, looking into, um, seeing if we could work with other districts and, um, offer this program, and then tuition students from other districts in, and provide a, a nice program, and, and that, that would allow this, these, you know, students in the program to have work opportunities and, um, you know, learn greater life skills, independence, independent living. Um, and, you know, we've got some, Donna's got some great plans for that, it's just we're in the planning phase of how it can look, and she's talking to some other districts about it at the same time. So those are all things that we would envision having at Pearly, um, next year. Um, but in terms of new positions, um, at, and they're not really new positions at Pearly, we, but we do need to maintain a full-time nurse, because we are going to have students with, as we do now, that have, you know, um, allergies and, you know, the medication needs, and there's just a, a lot of involved kids now, you know? So we do need to maintain the nurse. Um, we do need to maintain, um, a full-time secretary, um, and full year. And anybody that's affected by this, in terms of their position, we've already spoken to personally, they, they already know what the, what the plan is. So I think we can say that, um, Camille Early, um, who is the current Pearly Secretary, is going to be remaining at Pearly. So she'll handle the preschool responsibilities, which makes sense, 'cause she's already doing that, she knows that process in and out. People, from, families are familiar with her. Um, and she will also, uh, spend some of her time working as, as Julie's administrative assistant, because as we've talked about before, you know, with Ju- the vol- volume of work that Julie has with curriculum, she has no clerical support, other than what she can get from help from the secretaries, who've been great. But she needs a designated, uh, a designated, you know, person to help her. And Camille actually used to be the former school committee secretary, so she's very efficient and, you know, very, um, great typist and all of that. So, so Camille, Camille will remain at, um, at, uh, Pearly. Uh, Nurse Louise will remain also as the nurse at, um, Pearly. And then, full-time day custodian, um, because obviously, there's gonna be not only these programs, but the Senior Center next January is going to be coming into Pearly, as well as all of the central office operations, like special education, um, you know, maintenance, technology, curriculum, everybody's coming to Pearly. So that's gonna be, those services are gonna be centralized there as well. So there'll be more than enough work for a day custodian. Um, currently, we have a night custodian, but as you'll learn in a minute, we're redirecting that amount, that money towards the position that we need at Pembroke. Um, so, uh, these, these positions, uh, you'll be able to see in the budget, 'cause we'll point them out for you. Um, some of these positions, um, can fit in the revolving account that we have at Pearly, but not all of them can fit fully there. So some proportion of these positions I'm talking to you about are reflected actually in this budget that we're talking about. Um, so, now if we talk about, uh, at Pembroke, so we've got more kids coming to Pembroke. So, we have, uh, put in the budget, a clerk typist, which would provide secretarial, additional secretarial support, similar to what we do, like in the middle school right now. We have a clerk typist who handles the middle school, um, you know, reception kind of thing, uh, does some, a little bit of work for the assistant principal, but, you know, contacts families, you know, answers emails. So Diane Collins will obviously remain as the, um, I'd say, the principal secretary there, in terms of the main, the main, uh, the main organizer of the office. And then, we will, uh, be hiring, uh, someone, a clerk typist, who will, um, work their school year. So Diane's a full-year employee, uh, we would, this per second person would be school year only, but if we needed to have some summer days, because Diane's on vacation, or Margaret needs it, or there's supplies coming in, and we need to make sure there's double duty there, we, we would be prepared to, um, provide some per diem, uh, support there as well. Now, we, we also, as I said, we're bringing a couple hundred kids over there, so we also have a need for nurse, for some support for the nurse. So, um, Kathy Hatch will continue to be the nurse, um, at Pembroke. Uh, you know, I'm talking with the medical folks right now, you know, um, about what the options might be. What we put in the budget, and this is kind of the number we're, we're sticking with, um, was twenty thousand, three sixty. So our first thought was, well, let's, let's, let's make sure she gets some support with triage. So the child comes down and says, "Oh, I have a headache." "Okay, honey, here's an ice pack, you sit here for a couple minutes." That doesn't necessarily need to be a nurse, uh, you know, a Nurse Hatch issue, but somebody that could help with some of those kind of things. You've got a bloody nose, okay, let me, let me help you, and if the nurse needs to see her, him or her, it would happen. But it's also somebody to help with the clerical work, because there's a lot of paperwork, there's a lot of follow-up with families, um, there's height weights, all those kinds, there's things that, that take a lot of the nurses' time. Um, so that was our thinking, and we're, we're thinking that's what we're doing. However, in talking a little bit more about the nurses, they're, they're wondering if we, we might reconsider looking at, you know, they know twenty thousand isn't gonna buy them a full-time LPN or a full-time RN. But, you know, maybe their preference would be that we hire for that twenty thousand, three-day-a-week LPN. I, I don't think we wanna micromanage that, I'm fine with, you know, taking their input and seeing, you know, we wanna get the best value. But we haven't had a chance to talk to all the nurses, so that's something that I'd definitely like to do. So right now, for the purposes of this discussion, for the budget, we're just working with the number of twenty thousand, three sixty, and that's.
Did you get an LPN for three days for that amount?
Yeah, I, that's what I don't know, Barbie.
So they.
I think, uh, they're telling me you can, I don't know, I don't know, I'm not.
So we're sticking with that dollar?
But the dollar figure is what we're sticking with, okay?
There may be some other certification.
Maybe, that's why I think the, I'd, I'd like to take the input of the medical people, how do they, how, what do they feel is gonna get the best coverage and, you know, the best service for the students there? Um, and the best support for, for what the nurse actually needs to be able to be comfortable doing her job. Okay, then, in terms of the custodial maintenance, so as I explain in the notes, right now, the square footage of the Pembroke School is twenty-eight thousand square feet. The new Pembroke is ninety-eight thousand square feet. So we currently have two custodians, that's not sufficient, I think we'd all agree. So, what we've done is, you know, this year in the budget for fifteen, we have, um, a, a night guy at Pearly, and then we also have funds, because when the construction project was going on, and we were worried about the dust, if you remember, we hired a part-time dust guy, for lack of a better word. So that, the dust guy and the night guy combined for the salary of a third custodian at the school. And we need, so that's not new money, that's just a redirection, right? So we need four custodians in order to, to meet the, I'd say, level three standard of cleanliness, which is not white glove, but it's, it's clean. So, um, so that, we're looking for the salary for the fourth custodian, so that is actually in the budget. You'll see that that's reflected in the budget, that is a, and I told the town, when we disbended the school, I said, "That's what you're gonna need, you're gonna need an extra custodian." Um, now, the other thing that we, we really are gonna need, I don't know how much we're gonna need it this next year, but we will need it the following year, so we need to fire the shot across the bow that it has to happen in FY seventeen. And that is a maintenance person, because we're going to have a very sophisticated, you know, system there, um, computerized system, we're going to have all brand-new fields. So those fields aren't gonna be online until the summer of two thousand sixteen. That's why we're not, we're not putting it in the, we're not recommending it go into budget this year. Because I don't know that they'd have as much to do this year, but next year, when all those fields are online, and all the flower beds and all the, that's a big school to maintain, we would be asking for another.
Maintenance.
Maintenance person. Um, you know, we can talk to the town, when we talk to the FinCom about, you know, 'cause I know that we've been working on shared maintenance with, um, some, Mike's been doing a great job, and I've had, been involved in several meetings. You know, at some point, the town would like to consider, you know, us sharing services, you know, with the town in terms of a centralized maintenance, and, and we see some very strong benefits for that, we also say there's some questions we have to fully resolve, but, but they were hoping we would put in a full-time maintenance person and a full-time HVAC system person. In order to hit two and a half percent, those are not in this budget. So if there's another, another conversation with the town about, you know, how we might, you know, uh, hire those people with some degree of, you know, togetherness, then I, I think we should have that conversation, because I think there, there is a need for it. But, like I said, this, because we're not bringing all those fields online this year, we've elected not to put the budget, put that in the budget, although I wanna identify it as a need. Okay, um, so, oh, and then, because, uh, we have. Okay, um, so, oh, and then, because uh, we have evaluated all of the, the ed plans and the need for um, for services, we are, we have added a point-five special education teacher. Now, we have a point-five special education teacher at Pearly now, so it would really be extending that person to full-time, and that way, we can cover all of the educational plans that we, we know about.
And that person is fine with the full-time?
Yeah, we, that's not gonna be a problem.
Okay.
Yeah. So then you go to the next category of people, which we call redirection of staff from the middle school to Pembroke. Um, so since the sixth grade is moving, we need five core acad- we need five core academic teachers, which we're gonna talk a little bit of how that's gonna look when we get to the Pembroke transition discussion, but for the purpose of this discussion, salary, salaries of five academic teachers, which total three hundred and eleven nine sixty-four. We also are moving, the sixth, the special education teacher that works with the sixth-grade students is going to move to Pembroke. And then um, in order to make the um, situation where we're trying to do a transition with band and chorus, right, so K through five will be um, the program Tyler offers uh, now, as it is now, it's more of an integrated music program. And then in sixth grade, students will have the opportunity to choose band or chorus, so it won't be the continuation of the program that Tyler's doing, it'll be band or chorus. And in order to make that work, because Tyler hasn't figured out how to clone himself and divide himself to be in the same place for two things in one period, um, the choral teacher from the middle school is going to come. Peter's done a great job, you know, working on it, because there's a rotating schedule at the high school and middle school.
Oh, we know.
So, so you can't, you, you can't say, "Oh, it's gonna be a different day every, time every day," when the teacher's available at Pembroke. You have to say, "This is sixth grade music and it's like that every day." So Peter's been able to give G block, the oppor- you know, to have the G block choral teacher come over and work with Tyler to split that responsibility in that particular day that they have mus- that each class has music. And then, in a way, that makes sense, because, you know, Tyler does the band. So it doesn't really make sense if Anthony came over to teach the music, and then Tyler does the band, and that, so, and the choral teacher is the choral teacher that the seventh graders will have, so it makes sense to have that
Transition.
Transition. So after all of that, all is said and done, that's how we plan to make that transition. So in order to make that work, the point-two FTE of the choral teacher has to be redirected to the Pembroke budget. Again, you'll see that pulled out in um, in the sub-pages that we're gonna talk about. Okay, so, a level services budget for our, without adding anything, was three percent. Okay? So if we needed to add things, that doesn't go in the right direction, right? Doesn't go closer to two and a half percent. So in order to hit two and a half percent, we had to make some reductions in a, you know, in a couple places. So the, the proposed reductions, in order to help us get there, um, and most of this is as a result of the elimination of the sixth grade from the middle school, because the core teachers are coming. But then there are spe- there are people in specialist subjects that actually were responsible for educate, you know, for working with the sixth grade, that they no longer will need to work with the sixth grade, because that's all gonna be handled by the specialists at Pembroke. Um, so point-six FTE art teacher, again, because that teacher worked with the sixth grade. Point-four physical education teacher, point-two music teacher, point-two math teacher. So that, you know how uh, Peter's explained in the past that you have, like, let's say in seventh grade, you have four core teachers, but you have more sections than that, so there are people who teach off the team, right? So as a result of the sixth grade going, there's not a need for that extra point-two math person. And then the, this was, we're gonna clean this up a little, because we met the other day. So point-four FTE theater arts. So theater arts falls into, Peter, he's gonna have, he's gonna have to help me with this. But theater arts falls into the English department, really, right? So um, the, because you're not servicing the sixth grade anymore, right? The um, the T- oh, Peter, you're gonna have to help me. So the teacher that was teaching it is an English teacher.
In this year's budget, there's a point-five theater arts position for the middle school. And uh, we weren't able to find the teacher. So we filled it with current teachers teaching beyond their caseload for, for pay. And-
English teachers.
English teachers. So we've cut that point-five position, which we only needed point-four, because the sixth grade left. So there's, so there's still seventh and eighth grade theater arts, and it's-
But there's no need for teachers to teach outside their-
Right, it to- it told point-four, so I had to redirect English teachers into that spot. So the bottom line is, is a point-four cut in theater arts, but we are still s- providing that-
Because nobody now has to teach extra. Because what was happening is those, two of those teachers didn't, didn't have a prep. They chose to teach an extra class. So with the sixth grade moving, they don't need to teach an extra class. So seven, there's enough for seventh and eighth grade to still have theater arts.
The easiest way to think of it is rather than cutting uh, point-four of an English teacher, we move them into the theater spot.
I know that's, I know that's complicated.
No, it's created.
It took me a while, I'm still trying to figure it out, but Peter understands it, so-
You told me this the other day and you said it time-
I think I got it messed up, because I thought it was social studies teachers, right? I thought it was social study, I know, I know, I know.
No, you said English, because I remember saying English and-
No, I don't know. I think I get, I'm getting it now, but all we need to know is when Peter schedules the building, he can schedule seventh and eighth grade theater arts. That's what we care about.
Okay.
Okay? They're gonna have theater arts, that's the message.
Okay.
Okay, so-
Because they love theater arts.
Right, exactly. So, so with making those reductions, which basically account for not having the sixth grade anymore, we also looked at some other reductions. So um, the, the legal services, that's the, that's the um, you know, the, sort of our central office legal services, because Donna Straight also has a, a line for legal services. So the special ed legal services is remaining the same as it's been, it's level-funded. But usually, um, the legal services uh, changes a little depending on what um, we need the attorney to help us with. So in a negotiations year, some years, we, we put more in, because we anticipate it's gonna be more time. Because next year, we're not anticipating that we have a need for that, we're, we're thinking it's, we're not reducing at all, we're just reducing it by that amount, thinking that we're safe in doing so. The other thing is, because we're talking about ma- maintenance contact, contracted services, um, Mike, because we're opening a brand-new building-
This is good to see.
And because we're opening, you know, we're renovating the middle-high school, um, and because Pearly, after we do the roof, will be in really great shape, we're not anticipating as many projects, because in the past, we've had to have money to sort of fix things to keep them going. We, we're not expecting that next year. Next year, we're, we're feeling like if there's a year that we think we might safely be able to reduce that particular line, it would be next year, when you're opening up these beautiful, brand-new spaces, you know, doesn't mean we don't have a need for projects, that's why we're, we're just reducing it by twenty-five thousand dollars, um, and maintaining-
No, I asked you, Mike feels comfortable doing that.
Yeah, we, we talked with him.
Right, and what we talked about was, we, we really don't know what it's gonna cost us to maintain the Pembroke School, like the gray water system, but it will give us the year to measure. We shouldn't have any repairs. The whole new roof at the high school, all those new units, I mean, that, those were we are getting stuck.
We were getting stuck.
Um, the high school's getting the new phone system, that was one place we keep, you know, phones keep crashing and whatever, so besides a couple elevator issues, um, there really shouldn't be anything. So it, and it will give us next year to measure what it will cost us to maintain the systems at, at Pembroke.
Yeah, so that's why we're suggesting it for this year. And then um, there's a, there's a, a little bit of a reduction in um, elementary specials, uh, particularly uh, point-one FTE, which is about three hours in music, and point-one in physical education. So in thinking about how, how much time the specialists, how many periods the specialists will teach, we're working obviously with the union on some things related to guaranteed prep time and so based on the number of sections and the number of people, um, the building can be scheduled with everybody having, you know, a guaranteed prep time and having a, sort of an equal teaching load. Um, and we'll, of course, as we start doing the schedules, developing the schedule, we'll uh, involve the specialist in, you know, helping us figure out what's the best way to, to schedule, but that, that's a reduction of twelve thousand dollars.
Adding three grades and we're-
Because, yep, yep, because um, when you look at the, the teaching periods now, you know, there, there are a couple of places where there, you know, there are more than one teaching period that's sort of open for, for some of the specialists. So if you assume that when sixth grade comes down, that would fill one period, and with K, if one comes down, you, you fill another, so there's still a gap for at least one grade, so a lot of the specialists, some of the specialists will be point-twos. But because of the, that's why we need the specialist to help us, because, you know, you have to figure out how you distribute that, right, so that everybody can work during the hours they have to work and everybody gets a great-
I mean, it's not a lot, but I'm sure-
It's not a lot, no.
But we're gonna have so many more students, so just-
Well, that's why I said, that, based on what we understand about the schedule, that can happen, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll look at that carefully. Um, yep, so, and, and also just pointing out, you know how the budget book works, you're gonna get some information in the back here on revolving accounts and grants. Because we often say that we're running, what did we say, thirteen-nine? We're running a thirteen-nine million-dollar operation, but we're really not. We're running more like a fifteen-million-dollar operation. By the time you look at our grants and revolving accounts and, and, and as, as I always say to you, you know, there's a couple of those revolving accounts that I always worry about, like school choice and, and uh, preschool revolving. Uh, generating additional revenue at Pearly would help with that, will help with that. But um, you know, I do think we over-rely on grants and revolving accounts and it, it's, but it's how we keep our budget at two-point-five percent. Um, so I, I did talk to you about the, the generation of the additional revenue, which I talked about. Um, and then just finally, I mean, I, I think there's a lot of complicated nuances in building a budget, especially when it's when you're trying to get the highest value for the dollars that you have and protect the programs that are most, you know, critical, because it, that's, that's, that's key. Um, so our, our sense in this budget is that we will be able to obtain, you know, uh, do our objectives based on uh, what we're talking about, still move into a new school, maintain the, the Pearly school and um, you know, and maintain the programs and services, the, the, the loss or the, the difference at the middle-high school may be, you know, Peter may have to increase class sizes by consolidating a couple of courses that he might need to consolidate, or maybe he'll reduce an elective if he has to. But it's not programs, big programs, it's not, we're not having forty kids in a class, that's not what we're talking about here. But, you know, he, he's, he knows how to schedule, you know, in a way that, you know, we will get the greatest value for the students, given the resources that we have there. So, you know, very much wanna thank Lorene and, and Michael for, you know, working with us on the budget, uh, giving us their insight and perspectives, and I know Barbie, you, you were helpful as well. Uh, you know, the administrative team can't say enough about, you know, the fact that I, as I put in here, that, you know, you have to advocate for your own programs, right? Otherwi- otherwise who's going to, right? So they each have a, you know, strong opinions about what they'd like to see in their programs and in their schools, but when we sit together as a team and we have to figure out, okay, what, what are we gonna do here, you know, i- it's amazing how, how everybody has that sense of teamwork and that we're gonna, we're gonna all do the give and take, and at the end of the day, we're gonna be proud of what we put together, knowing that maybe it isn't a hundred percent of what we would want, but it, it really does reflect, you know, the basis of what we need.
Right.
So I, I do think that, you know, I, as I put in here, I'm, I'm very grateful to work in a place, because it doesn't happen everywhere, where, where people can, can have that balance between, you know, strongly, you know, advocating for what you need, but also being able to put it aside and, and say, "Okay, we're a district team." So I, I always wanna recognize, and, and Joan has done a, a lot, a lot of work and, and has sat many hours with me, you know, trying to strategize and some, some things, and, you know, again, you know, we're tremendously grateful. And then I just conclude here, but I, I just think it needs to be said publicly, that we are extremely grateful to the taxpayers of Georgetown for their continued support of schools.
Yep, absolutely.
As demonstrated by, you know, annual funding increases, funding and operation override four year, several years ago, new Pembroke school building project, middle-high school renovation project, and all the financial assistance that gets provided for sort of ex- extraordinary special ed costs when we've run into a situation, when we've had to go to the town, you know, we, they've understood our situation. Um, so, you know, we, we do think we have a good product for our, for, for what the taxpayers get, but it, we would be remiss if we didn't emphasize how much we do appreciate, you know, the continued support from the town. So, um, so if you just keep kinda going through, section B is just the budget calendar, which we've gone over. Obviously, section C, you know, we always wanna remember, kinda, everything we do should tie back into our mission.
Yep.
And, and our belief statement and, and uh, in our strategic plan, so we always include that as a reminder of that. And then, um, when we start building the budget, we do, we do start with some basic assumptions. And so I'll just quickly run through those, and then we can go through the sections you'd like to see. So when we developed the FY budget proposal, the following methods were, were used to project expenditures. So we did tell you, the budget was based on a two-point-five percent increase, as requested by the town administrator. But it does not represent a level services budget, right? There are some reductions in order to get to that number and to be able to add the core things that we know we needed to add. Um, salaries are set according to negotiated contracts. So, um, you know, just so you know, that, that does in- include uh, the step increases for the teachers, you know, the two percent increase for the paraprofessionals and tutors, which we had already agreed to, as well as the two percent increase for custodial staff and food services staff that we had already agreed to. Um, and then raises for the teachers and administrators are currently being negotiated, so that's not, you know, pulled out here. Um, so I already talked to you about several of our positions are funded by whole, in whole or part by federal grants. Um, and that, so that's just important for you to know, although we do, and want you to know that the general trend in grant funding for some of our entitlement grants is definitely shrinking, um, shifting the cost of maintaining those positions to the local community. So for example, we just heard really recently that the kindergarten grants are being reduced. The governor had put that in his nine-C cuts. So we're looking at what that means, because what we do with that money is we pay for a paraprofessional in each preschool. So we're, depending on what that cut is, we either have to cut something else in order to make that possible for us to continue to fund those aids in the budget, or we reduce the number of aids. I mean, th- those kinda things have to be discussed, but, you know, we just want you to know, and, and Julie can tell you, the Title One grant has sort of steadily, uh, is special ed grant, they, they sort of steadily go down. So you have to be careful that we don't put too many expenses on those, because then it, it's not possible to fund them. It has to go somewhere, either it gets cut or it goes in the budget. Um, uh, let's see, oh, special education tuitions and special ed transportation. Um, we did budget a four percent increase in the contract rates for the existing students. Um, let's see, most non-salary lines are level-funded, that's why you see the minus. Uh, with the exception of the maintenance contracted services, which we talked to you about reducing. That's what accounts for that, that minus percentage increase. Um, there are no, Chris has put, Chris Franco has put his budget in here, as he always does. There are no increases in athletics included in this budget as a result of the greater participation in athletes. So remember, Chris had said before that he has, it, the only way he can really keep his, without increasing user fees, which we've want, not wanted to do. The only thing, other option he has is to increase participation, and thankfully, we have increased participation. So that's not making it necessary to, to adjust um, that budget, um, uh, increase the budget. Um, school choice revenue will be decreased by the graduation of two students. So when you talk about it in March, I think we usually talk about school choice, um, we will determine if there are slots available, if we want to make slots available, but this budget assumes that there's gonna be no increase in potential slots. We didn't, we didn't budget for it. Um, so, current staffing and appropriate operational budgets at Pearly and the middle schools have been transferred to Pembroke, so you, you I've told you about what, what those specifically are, but you'll see it when you look at the back, the backup. Um, there are, there are additional positions, which I talked to you about already, included in the transition from Pearly, from Pembroke, uh, to Pembroke. And um, bus transportation, I think, is something that we have to chat about for a minute. So we currently, as you know, have five buses, and we put five buses in our, in our budget again. Our hope and dream was that we're, because we were moving to a new school, wouldn't it be a wonderful opportunity to not have to do a double bus room? Because it educationally doesn't make sense. A lot of parents don't take advantage of the- A lot of parents don't take advantage of the, of the bus options. I think somehow, sometimes because of the fact that your child has to go to school an hour early or get home an hour late. So, I don't know if that's the reason, but I think it's definitely a factor. So it would, we've, we've been able to manage it in the past, so now the sh- the second run is a shorter run, as opposed to everybody has to, yeah, the buses have to go all over town once and then all over town twice. It, now it's all over town and then s- shorter, more specific runs, but it's still a double bus run. So, as you know, we went out to bid for, um, you know, the next bus contract that we need to do next, with three years, right Joan?
Yeah, three years.
And Joan opened the bid yesterday, we had one, we anticipated we'd have one, we're, we're kinda small. You know, the bigger companies don't wanna bother with five buses frankly. We had one. It was North Reading Transportation, which we have been working with, we are happy with them, we don't, they've, they've been very easy to deal with. And we, you know, obviously, we anticipated that the bus cost was going to go up. We had built in a five percent increase, but it's a little more than that. Um, however, we don't feel like it's an outrageous increase, it's just an increase. So, i- if we needed, if we wanted seven buses, we would need a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars more.
Well, we were thinking a hundred, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's, that's what I said, it, I mean.
It's not, it's not way off.
No, but when you think that one percent of your budget is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So, that's.
Thirty-nine thousand?
It was a hundred and thirty-nine thousand was the, and Joan probably has the more specific numbers.
Forty thousand more over what you thought.
Yeah, so, again, the money we put in the budget was not enough.
For the five?
Right, so, so I can tell you that, what it was specifically. So, um, for five buses, we're short, we're short in this budget, thirty-six thousand eight hundred and ten dollars.
For just the five?
That's just the five.
Thirty-six how much?
Thirty-six eight one zero.
So that was an increase of how much? What's the percentage?
What was the percentage Joan?
We budgeted for five.
The, okay, the current bus, the current was two twenty-eight, six, uh, six ninety, and then.
That's what we budgeted.
That's what we.
Yep.
That's why, that's what I have for current buses, and then but, five buses was two sixty-five five hundred.
Current, current budget, cause the current bus contract is two seventeen.
Oh, okay.
And I added five percent to the budget.
Right, okay, so, right, so what's in the budget that we were anticipating it would cost us is two twenty-eight, six ninety. The actual number is two sixty-five five hundred.
The price of gas has gone down so much.
Well, it's going up again, it's creeping up.
I don't know. If we wanted six buses.
Okay.
Split it, split the middle. We need eighty-nine thousand nine ten. And then it's one forty-three zero ten, if, for, for seven buses. It's basically two ninety-five per bus, per day. So, a cost of one bus, regardless, it's just a cost of one bus is fifty-three thousand one hundred dollars for the year. So, I mean, I don't know that we're gonna get our hope and dream, but we did not put it in the budget. We, all we put in the budget was the five buses.
But that was discussion.
Then the discussion was, could we then go maybe to, when we go to the FinCom and say, out of free cash, would there be an opportunity for you to maybe help us? Because we would try to make our case that it's not educationally making sense. Um, because we spend thirty-eight thousand dollars hiring people to babysit the kids, you know, and maybe we don't need to be spending that.
And that's at a rate of, we, we figured that thirty-eight thousand is what we pay for babysitting.
That's right.
Okay.
And then we were thinking, well, maybe what we could do.
And you're down to a hundred again.
I put it, I put it back in. In the budget, we had no choice, we couldn't take it out, because, yeah, we still have the kids coming. So.
So if you took out the thirty-eight, what was, what's the actual increase that you need for the two, for the two additional buses? Cause you could take out the thirty-eight thousand if you.
It's thirty-three.
You can take out the thirty-three though, if you got additional funding for the two buses, right?
Right.
Yes, that's, that's what we.
What would that number reduce by?
We need one forty-three?
So it's one forty-three minus thirty-three?
Right.
Yeah, so about a hundred and ten?
Hundred and ten. So the other thing we, we thought about was, well, maybe what we could do, because I think there's, there's interest in this. One and a half miles from your house, based on the GPS that's in TransFinder, not everybody's individual GPS, cause you have to have some standard, is one point five or out, is where you qualify for the bus. But there are people who are saying, well, you know what? We live a mile, or between a mile and a mile and a half, and man, it would be great for us to be able to ride the bus. So, we thought, well, one of the things we could do is we might be able to offset the cost, so we looked at what other towns do. And if you, if you lived within that range, then, and you wanted to ride the bus or have your child ride the bus, then, you know, it'd be a dollar a day, or, so a hundred and eighty dollars a year, or two hundred dollars a year, that's kinda their going rate. Although some districts, it's like two and three hundred dollars, I don't know how they get away with that, but they do. I know, Jo- Joan's going.
Larger towns.
I don't know, it just doesn't set well with me, you know, so I, I wouldn't recommend that, but, but anyway, the point would be, you know, maybe we could fill a need that some of the parents might have, and then you offset the cost of the extra buses. I don't know if we're gonna be able to do that if we have five buses, because we might not have enough seats, but we'll have to think about it.
Right, and if you put in a request for the seven, for the additional funds, you can't guarantee what that upset would be.
Exactly. Right, so I, if the town said, well, you will work with you, but, but yeah, you, but yeah, you have to sell some seats for us. We'd be happy to do that, I just, like you said, we can't guarantee how many people would. I, I actually have talked to lots of people over the years that have said, oh, man, you know, I, I live one point three miles, you know, can't you let me on the bus? So, I don't know, maybe those people, and people have said to me, well, I'll pay for that. So, again, I think, we, we haven't put it in the budget, I'm just telling you about what the conversations have been, cause we're, we're trying to meet multiple needs here. But at the very least, we have to come up with the money we're short for the five buses. In the increase, which is the thirty. We, we have, we will have a plan for you, I mean, we will have a suggestion for you about that at the twenty-sixth. But we haven't had a chance to sort of get together and talk about what we, what we think.
And that's thirty-six eight.
Thirty-six eight. Okay, and then you flip to the next page, you've got the, the nice little pie graph that basically breaks down, you know, how much is, what percentage of the budget is administration, instruction, instructional support, special education, employee benefits, athletics, non-instruction and building progress. So you, you can take a look at that and do you have any particular questions? I mean, this is pretty standard, you know, and what you see.
It changed one percent, I forget where, but from last year, it changed one percent.
But it's pretty standard in what you see in a lot of school budgets, you know, that's how it kinda breaks down.
Really nice of you to chart.
Yes, it's a helpful, yeah, yeah, it works out well, Joan did a nice job on it. For visual people, right? Okay, so then, then you, and this is up to you, how you wanna proceed. If you wanna go through each of these, or you wanna go through a couple of them and finish, finish going through them the next time, whether you wanna take it home, look through it and then come prepared with any questions you have the next time, it's really up to you how, how you wanna, how you wanna do this.
Okay, um, I looked this over this evening for a couple of hours before the meeting. But I could certainly use a couple more hours to look it over. Lorene probably knows these numbers by heart.
Not by heart, but I've gone through it. I feel, I feel pretty comfortable, with the exception of the open questions that we've gotta resolve. The biggest, the biggest pages you'll see changes on, obviously, are um, Pearlie and Pembroke. Pearlie, almost everything is zeroed out, except the things that Carol spoke about, and in Pembroke, everything has changed. Everything's, looks like it grew tremendously, but, you know, it's all the redirection of everything, so. There really isn't much change in this budget at all.
I mean, I, I, I think the way you've put this together is beautiful and clear, and I really appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this. I think again, you, the finance committee is gonna be very pleased. I would love to see some of this up on a PowerPoint. Just, you know, for the community and, and for people who are looking for, just to grab highlights and a quick understanding. I, I would just go to, you know, numbers that jump out at me and huge differences. Um, could you just explain the employee benefits here, from FY fifteen revised to FY sixteen proposal? So, what's going, what's happening here?
So, when we build a budget, especially in a negotiation year, you know, we're not sure what the, um, money's gonna be, whether it's for, um, administrators or whatever. So, say last year, we might've had money put in that line, um, for our raises, say. I think it was like thirty thousand dollars budgeted. So, once the school year starts and Carol negotiates all our contracts, I take that thirty thousand dollars and I spread it out into everybody's salary line. And that zeroes out that line. So every single year, and that's a, it's a good question, but every single year you'll see the revised budget compared to what the projected budget is, is a huge discrepancy, because I take that money and I filter it to all the lines, once the budget's passed and she negotiates all the contracts.
If you simply buy that, or employ, you know, we don't have any re- re- retirement incentives, but all of that gets reflected in that line.
Okay.
Where are you, Pam, Tab D?
Just right here.
No, uh, Tab D, the, oh, summary, you're in the summary.
So you see right there, employee benefits.
Yep, yep.
It's a big change.
She's in the summary, right? And, you know, we, we will post this on the website, cause if people wanna come and make a comment on the budget, they should see what they're commenting on.
Yeah, I'd barely do it today.
Yeah, but, so when the public looks at it, just so they remember that for each section, so if you go, like, to say to the section G, which is Pembroke, it, there's a, a little write-up about the school at the top. And then there's an enrollment, so you can see how that breaks down by grade. Class size is there as well. Then, for every, for every account that Joan lists here on the, on the summary page, so if somebody wanted to say, well gee, I wonder what's, um, I wonder what's going on with line, you know, this line on, uh, you know, art teacher salary, well, that's not bad, that's a bad choice, supplies in math. You know, they're gonna, they're gonna go to the bottom and they're gonna find that same line, and it's gonna tell you exactly what's in the line. So, there's no question about, like, if we reduce something or we added something, then the line is gonna be clearly delineated, it's the explanation.
Yes.
So, peop- cause sometimes when people look at a budget, they'll, why did it go down fifty, or up fifty-seven percent? Sounds like such a lot, but then you go and look at the specific there, the explanation is there.
That's awesome, that's great.
The other thing that I think is important to note is, you know, when you look at the, the full year fifteen compared to the sixteen, well, that's the budget, it's the spend, it's what you actually spent.
Right.
So it's not like it's a, it's a budget that you develop, but you spent less. So this is your run rate, this is what you spent.
Right, right.
So you're really just looking for the things that are jumping out.
Right. Right, and little, little expenses sometimes look like, when they're changing, they look like bigger percentages. But if you go back in and say, well, you know, little numbers sometimes make bigger percent, look like bigger percent.
Right.
But as Lorene said, some, it's not what we budgeted last year, it's what we spent.
It's what you spent.
That's different.
Yep. The numbers are certainly consistent, I mean, some jump out at me. Um, tutors and aides and, um, the build, you know, we had some buildings.
Buildings and, the, the, the tutors and aides is a function of building our own in-house special ed programs.
I don't know, I'm just thinking with, without Michelle and, and without Michael and Alana here. Ask whatever questions that you would like, but I'm certainly gonna ask. I mean, I'm certainly gonna be looking at this further. Just, do you know what goes into campus safety line?
Uh, well, actually, if you look, it's that thirty-three nine oh nine. And campus safety, this, this budget is built according to how I have to report to the state at the end of the year. So that's a section on the state report. So campus safety would be the transportation supervisors. It doesn't sound right, but you call them babysitters?
No, transportation aides is what they are, not babysitters.
That's what you're talking about, like, to watch the kids before and after school, when they're waiting for the buses. Well, that has to go in a category, so I have to figure out where does that go? So it's really campus safety.
Because otherwise, what Joan, if Joan doesn't link it to what her state report is, then she has to literally be doing two separate documents and then doing a crosswalk, which is a lot more effort.
Well, this is what the state wants you to be doing, anyway. I, I did, um, I did ask you in an earlier email today, I don't even know if you, you saw it. Cause in years past, we have had a breakdown of each individual employee of what they make.
Not for a long time, not, not back until the George days.
Well, I'm on my fourth year, so it's not that long ago.
I don't remember us ever having, in your fourth year, really?
I'm in my fourth year.
I know, but you, you've seen that? Oh, that was under Jim.
I think it was Jim.
It was Jim.
Yeah, I mean, how difficult is that?
Well, it's not difficult, because I have it, because that's how I got my numbers to fit into the budget, so I have a staffing pattern.
So you can provide that?
Well, let's talk about why you want that, so, but we don't need to talk about that, but I'd like to hear a little bit more about why you want that. Information, not saying, we, we'll provide it if you want it, it's just a question of, I'm wondering why you want it. So, let's talk a little bit more about it and then we'll, we'll produce it for the twenty-sixth, if that's what you want. Definitely. What else you, what, do you wanna, do you want us to, uh, we'll come, we can come back on the twenty-sixth with, um, some, some suggestions for the thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
Yeah, and then if you come back with your questions, cause Michael will be here, no, Michael won't be here.
Oh, Michael won't be here.
Remember, he said he wouldn't be here.
Didn't he say?
Oh, he could by phone, possibly.
Oh, yeah.
And I did.
He did say that was an option.
I did, I did email him the PDF copy of this, so, he hasn't.
Yes, I saw that, you emailed it to him, which is great, I mean, he's in a place he might not review it, but he can if he wants to, right?
He said he would.
He can if he wants to.
Maybe he's trying to make me feel good, but he did say to send it to him if I could.
I think he will look at it, yes.
So is there anything else that you would want for the twenty-sixth that maybe we, we could work on in the meantime, or you just really wanna preserve it? And if you have questions along the way, you know, as you're looking at it, if you email them to us, then we can make a, you know, a database of those and then be prepared to answer it for everybody on, uh, you know, on the next, at the next meeting.
Have you already started looking for that there, I know you just found out yesterday.
We sort of have, but we, you know, with the administrators, you know, we emailed administrators and said, hey guys, any thoughts, you know? So, we, we haven't had a chance to meet or talk about it.
And the fact that we only had one bid kind of leads us in that where we know, like, barter there, like.
First, well, there's not really a bartering.
I'll be honest with you, um, when I first started here, you had just signed the contract with the, with the current bus company, and they had really come in low. Um, the other bus company that was the other competitive bid was not far away from this price.
Three years ago.
Three years ago. So, I, I was pleasantly surprised that it was the price it was. I didn't, I didn't think it, their prices were, we, over time, over those three years, we saved a lot of money.
Yeah.
If, if the price of gas has gone down so much. I know, but it's gone down.
They, they didn't go up, they couldn't go up. But, but it is interesting, cause the process that you have to use for the bid isn't, we, we talked about this with Lorene, you know, and this difference between public sector and private sector, right? I mean, you have, there's, there are bidding laws that you have to follow and, you know, able to say, hey, we don't really like your bid, so could you come back with another one, you know, it, it is not really possible. So, um, but again, I, we, we thought five percent was a shot, but we're, we're off of that, we're off of the mark.
Pam, you have to remember too, I mean, they're bidding for sixteen, you know, they, they have to give their projections for what they think gas is gonna be next year.
Right.
It's not right now.
Right.
Right.
So.
Yeah, you know, it's the, it's, the bidding process is a very, and you know, doing all these construction projects, I've learned a lot about it and it is, is very interesting.
Looking in good shape, we, have we had any bus breakdowns this year?
Yeah, they, cause they have the new, no.
Multiple times, coming from Boston.
Oh, I don't know. We, we.
It was, it was a while ago.
I haven't heard of one bus issue.
Well, we had the Six Flags bus last year, um, going, you know, going for a field trip breakdown. But that's not like a.
Maybe it doesn't come, it hasn't come to our level.
Glad to hear that with all the storm, the snow, that we haven't had any, like, that got stuck or.
No, I have to say, you know, in the, and again, you know, the bus, the bus company, when we've had any kind of issues on the bus, let's say student issues or whatever, they, you know, we, we talk to them or they talk to us, that we get the tapes, they have. they, you know, we, we talk to them, or they talk to us, that we get the tapes, they have ta- you know, they have cameras on every bus, which is really a nice feature. It helps us, we, you know, really look at what we might be able to see. Um, you know, in the case of these days, so that I could get everybody in here on delays, I said, would you please just pick up any child that is walking? Just, just, I don't, I care if they have the bus or not, just pick them up. Absolutely, Carol, no problem, you know, so, and I haven't, you know, whenever I've asked for anything, you know, we have district safety meetings, they, the representative attends almost every district safety meeting. So, you know, I, and when there were some issues with a couple of the drivers, you know, the, the owner came in, had a meeting with all of us in the Pembroke Library, and tried to work on whatever the issues were, so, again, you know, I don't think that happens always, so, you know. But again, you know, we wanna get the best value for it, it's obviously an impact, but, and I don't know about the buses that break down, I mean, I don't think that happens very often. Um, so.
Can we, I, I mean, I, I, you'll, you'll be working on all the possibilities.
Yeah.
Um, is, is it possible to start out the contract with five buses and go to seven the next year?
It, it can happen.
To see how everything works out, if we couldn't find the money, I mean, if there's no guarantee that we can, the town, you know.
I initially had, I initially had the bud, I initially had the buses in the budget. And then was thinking we should defend the custodian above-level services, but as I thought about that more, I'm like, you know what? We really need the custodian, that needs to be in our budget. We, MSBA, we, we have, it's a lot of square feet, but MSBA, we, we, we entertained a, you know, a contract with MSBA that where they're paying for fifty percent of this project, and we said we would maintain the building. And the town is expecting that, that is a commitment we made, so we have to have the four custodians, that's just not a choice. And then the buses, because we can survive with five buses, we are surviving with five buses, um, you know, if we wanna defend others or have a conversation with the town around, you know, one or two more buses, then we can have that. So, that's the approach we took, was the most important thing was the custodian to get in the budget and then defend the buses on the outside. So, you're right, we, we may be stuck with five buses, but I think it's worth having the conversation about.
And pickup will be so different next year.
It will be, it, it should, it should be, because everybody's gonna be in one building. But the, but the issue is, but the issue is, what's probably gonna have to happen though, is five buses are gonna come and pick up a percentage of the kids, and then five buses are coming back and picking up the rest. So, that is not educationally sound, but I'm just telling you, it, the, the time to argue for this is now. But it, you know, if I, if we're being told that two and a half is really a hard figure with the town, and, you know, the town administrator has sort of fired the shots across the bow, that he really wants one and a half percent. Which would mean an additional one thirty in cuts for us, in addition to the thirty-eight. Now, we're getting into some very serious things, so I, 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 I believe with the buses, in order to protect the integrity of this budget.
Right, right. Looking at the fifteen to the sixteen, the one thirty's not impossible, in my opinion, to achieve.
Oh, we, we agree with you. But it would, it would represent, it would re- it would res- it would represent bodies, it would.
Well, right.
Because when we go, you know, when we went in and we looked at every, the administrators and Jonah, we looked at every single line. Right, and there, there just, there just isn't any fa- any fat. You know, we, we, if you look at the bar graph, or not the bar graph, the circle graph, we spend like one percent of our budget on supplies.
Right.
I mean, it.
Well, that's because the parents are so generous in sending in the supplies.
I know, it's absolutely true. So, you know, I mean, obviously, you know, again, we're trying to work with the town, but, you know, maybe two and a half percent every year isn't a sustainable budget. So, you know, some years, you know, it, we can do it easier, other years, you remember, uh, was it last year, we, we, two and a half percent was possible, but remember, the addition of special education expenses was an additional two. So, we ended up with four percent, but two percent was special education costs that we couldn't control. So, this year, we have circuit breaker funds, so that's why we're able to apply some of that money and reduce the amount, even though the expenses have not decreased.
Okay.
Okay.
This'll be a good read.
Yeah, you'll enjoy it.
Snowstorm.
You'll enjoy it.
In the multiple snowstorms.
But we do really appreciate you taking, I know you all take a lot of time going through every line, you know, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
No, I know, I appreciate all the time that you guys do, and the administration, I just, um, you know, I know that it's not easy for them to, like you would said, there's, there's some very important things that you wanna see in there, and then you kinda just put it on the back burner, and we appreciate it, but there's just, there's plenty of things we'd like to see in there too.
Absolutely.
And this being the transition year, there's a lot unknown.
Mm-hmm, that's right, right, so that, it's gonna take us a year to.
Really the transition year, this is the transition planning year.
Yeah, it's gonna take us a year to know what we really need, that's true, that's true, Pam.
This, this letter that you wrote, you know, ex- explaining everything, um, it's just so nice, beautiful, and clear. Is there any way we could post this on the website?
Yeah, we, we'll post the whole thing, yeah.
Okay, absolutely. Okay, well, thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Can I, uh, I would like to just change the agenda just a little bit, if we could just ask Julie, um, if we could just go right to the Pembroke Transition Plan, is that okay? Julie, could you do that?
Okay.
Julie will be patient.
Okay, so, a- as you know, every month we come back, Margaret, you wanna come up, Margaret? Um, we, we come before you and we chat about the transition plan, and, uh, as you know, we, we have a, a lot of decisions to make, and, um, you know, we try to engage the people who are directly affected by it in the discussion. So, tonight, we're gonna, I, I wrote it up for you in your, in your packet, so you're gonna, we're gonna go through this. So, the first, um, thing we wanna keep talking to you about is the sixth grade transition item, so there, there have been a few that we've already talked about, but one in particular is the, um, uh, trip to Camp Kiev. So, as you know, the current um, sixth grade, sixth grades go to Kiev every year, and then sev- maybe you don't know, but seventh grade, uh, Kiev comes to the school and does some onsite, um, programs with the kid. And then in eighth grade, the, um, actual, the eighth grade students go to Kiev for a three-day, you know, sort of, uh, trip. Okay, and, uh, you know, that, that whole focus of, uh, Kiev, uh, tends to be a very nice complement to the theme at the middle school, which is respect, responsibility, and community. Um, so that's a, you know, that's something that, uh, in talking with Peter, and, uh, his, he's got input from Heidi, and we talked to Joe Patella, who was the sixth grade, who is the sixth grade team leader. Um, and the, the thinking is that the high, the middle school would continue to have their relationship with Kiev. Uh, in seventh grade, um, well, actually, they're gonna be adding an advisory program, so they're engaging Kiev in the development of the advisory program, so the thinking would be to include as much of the Kiev language in the kind of activities that get done over the course of time in their, through their advisory. And, um, they would continue to have the Kiev folks come to seventh grade, to, just as they've done, and then go in eighth grade to, um, to Kiev. So, in thinking about this being a transition, our, our intention over time is to do, um, uh, STEM focus at the, at the Pembroke School, which is science, math, and technology. We'd like to add the arts piece to that, sometimes they call it STEAM. Um, so, so our, our hope, our thought down the road is that, and Julie's gonna talk a little bit more about the kinds of STEM activities that we're gonna put in place the, starting this summer, and then for next year. But there's the matter of the current fifth grade kids and what happens to them regarding the Kiev trip. So, in thinking about this and talking to different, different people in different groups, and we had a coffee with, um, some parents, and that, this was a, an item that was discussed. So, um, we think because the fact, cuz the, this particular group of fifth graders, if they were going to the middle school next year, they would go to Kiev. So, our plan is to have this fig- group of fifth grade go to Kiev in the fall. This'll be the last Kiev trip for sixth grade in our plan. Um, but that particular group, for many, for many reasons, makes sense that that group gets to go to Kiev. Um, they've looked forward to it, if they were going to the middle school, they would have it, so we're gonna have them go to Kiev. Joe thinks that that's a, a very good plan.
And that's like the, like after Thanksgiving again?
Yeah, November, and so they, they've ho- they held the date anyway, so we, we're, we're gonna be good on that, so they'll, having this decision made, they'll start talking to the parents, so unfortunately, one of the downsides to Kiev that I've seen in the past is we don't start talking to the parents about it till October, and they gotta go in November, so then they gotta raise all this money. So, if we have this decision made, we'll start talking to the parents now, the parents can have plenty of time to, to know that that's the plan. Um, and, um, so, that would be, that's, that's where, gonna be our recommendation. And then, like I said, it also gives us the, the year to transition to the new Pembroke, cuz there's gonna be plenty of new things to do in the fall that we don't really need to entertain a new trip on top of every other new thing we're doing. So, we think it gives everybody time to have, uh, you know, let us get into our STEM stuff, have a year to plan it, figure out what location we wanna go to, and actually, Joe Patella has had experience at, uh, Nature's Classroom as well. In fact, he told me the history, cuz he's been here a while. They used to do Nature's Classroom here, for years. And then they, they decided that they wanted to go more with the leadership, you know, the leadership thing, so they, they transitioned. And, um, so, in talking with Joe, I mean, we're also trying to make sure our science curriculum is inquiry-driven, and we have some work to do once these new science standards come out. So, we're feeling like this STEM, this STEM focus will, in, and going to an environmental camp where there is both an academic science, academic focus, as well as a team-building, self-esteem-building, trust-building, all of the things that people talk about with Kiev, you know. Well, it won't be done exactly the same way, it's still, you know, the, the.
I'm glad to hear it and read that they have that there too.
Yeah, yeah, so, but we would, we would look at, you know, the different varieties, we, parents would have an opportunity to learn more about it. And we've already got a.
Is that still like in a way?
It's a still-in-a-way trip, cuz that, in thinking about it from the point of view of what I heard at the coffee, I think Margaret and I heard the coffee, is, while there were definitely people who were strong Kiev, you know, proponents, because they've had experience, or they've heard about it, and they really wanted to have their child have an advantage to go there, there were also people who had been to Nature's Classroom and had been saying, you know what? At the end of the day, it sounds to me like the thing I heard clearly is they want a trip. They want a good trip for the kids, that they have a great time, that they go off-site, that they have a chance to be together. So, we feel like this represents a compromise, um, and still, you know, keeps the district's association with Kiev as part of the respect, responsibility, and community theme. We do responsive classrooms and other things at the element and commu- community service by grade. We feel like there's a lot of other opportunities, student council, anybody who wants to be on the student council can be on the student council, we've had school store in the past. So, we feel like there are opportunities for elementary students to have that focus on, you know, leadership.
And, and I'd also like to look into the pyramid, the peer mediation.
Mediation, yeah, we're interested in that as well.
So, that's another aspect that.
Right, so, we're trying to build the same skills, we're, and we're just trying to figure out how, and how do we, how do we have that transition? So, specifically, in, in thinking about the fifth grade kids, this year.
So, let me just ask you a question.
Sure.
You're saying that this fifth grade class will be the last class to go to Kiev next fall?
This, this coming fall, yeah.
Okay, as sixth graders.
As sixth graders.
So, in the middle school, we will still have, on a go-forward basis, Kim Kiev come to the seventh graders?
Nothing will change at the middle school.
And then the eighth grade will still have that for eight, okay, so that's still, okay.
Correct.
Okay.
So, again, after listening to everybody and thinking about, well, you know, transitions and, you know, what seems, you know, to be a, a way that ev- you know, we can, everybody can have an interest and the students get a, because as we, as we know, whether you go to Kiev or whether you go to Nature's Classroom, the kids are gonna have a wonderful opportunity. It's a great opportunity, you know, I'm, I've been familiar with both. I, I don't think one is better than the other, it's not really a value judgment, it's tying more into what we wanna be doing with curriculum um, as well, and still supporting the idea of, you know, leadership and good decision-making and and, and that, that's really needed at the middle school, that's really needed at the middle school. That's a tough.
Level, developmental level, they really need those social, emotional skills and foundation. And, you know, I'm glad that they all have a wonderful time there, but I've always said that the Kiev is, is not meant as a, as a reward vacation, it's they're, they're there to learn something. And, you know, they have the, the three curriculums there, the social, emotional, the all ways, anti-bullying, the forty developmental assets, and the life skills is kind of all woven together in Kiev's own customized.
Yes, absolutely.
You know, curriculum, which I'm, I'm happy to hear that we'd be continuing at the, at the middle school, cuz I think that age group really needs that badly. Um, but, and I'm, you know, do, do we know when the new science standards are going to come out? I think the old ones are nineteen ninety-nine, right? I got jokes before the people who came up that may not be around.
They were supposed to be adopted in December, but, um, they're still in a little bit of a state of flux, but that happens with the.
But they're coming out soon.
They're coming out.
We have the draft, and we're working on the draft.
I mean, they were supposed to be in December, that means that they're coming out soon.
We've been working out the draft for about a year now, so while they finalize, we just kind of.
And you have an idea of what they're going to be about, would, would you say that there's a, a, um, a correlation, a consistency with the Nature's Classroom curriculum with what we're gonna need to.
I would, yes, yeah. Certainly, I think that, along its stem, slash, um, are two major, two major areas we could look at, for sure.
The state is really, really big on inquiry and creativity and, you know, hands-on learning, and, and actually, uh, the STEM is something that you're gonna see coming out statewide, that there's more and more innovation grants, like Julie got a nice innovation grant to, to work with the, the business program at the middle high school. So, the, the, you know, they're not funding full-day kindergarten, but they're funding innova- innovation now, that's sort of the new, the new thing, the hands-on, you know, thinking for the future, critical thinking skills, problem-solving, which both Kiev and Nature's Classroom have embedded in their programs.
Excellent.
So, the si- it's a, it's a skill set that, you know, both, both promote. But, you know, hopefully, people will be comfortable with that, we do feel like that's the right and best thing for the si- the current fifth grade to have that opportunity to go to Kiev, and then give us the time to sort of put in place a new model, and really you know, let the parents know how it's gonna work, you know, be, be, let the committee know, you know, what the options are, how does Nature's Classroom work. And it will also allow sufficient time for fundraising, because like with any trip, it's, it's on the backs of the parents, you know, and and I know when I've had kids go to Ca- Nature's Classroom, when I was a principal, you know, the kids might have sold candy bars, I know wellness policy and all that, but this is what the, in the old days before wellness policies, this is how it worked. You got, you got a box of candy, and you sold it, and fifteen dollars of that went to the company, and fifteen dollars went to your little account. So, if you were an aggressive kid, whose parents said, you get out there in front of Stop and Shop and sell these candy bars, you really didn't have, the parents didn't have to, you know, foot as much of the bill, so again, we just need time, we were, they're already after the coffee, there, there was one parent who went and researched Nature's Classroom, I feel like I know all that I need to know about Nature's Classroom right now, but I don't think we're ready to go there yet, I think we need the time to sufficiently do it. So, I think that this is the best policy.
And this fifth grade class, I would assume, is doing the, their, the, um,
Play?
fundraising, well, the fundraising throughout the year, and that's always, um, gone into the next year towards Camp Kiev.
Correct, there's usually a portion of the money that goes toward Kiev. Oh, it helps a lot.
To subsidize scholarships for people, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Well, actually, I think, I think it, I think it was sort of taken off the top, so if this was the total amount of money, but Peter has ra- has done dances, and Margaret's intention is to, you know, have sixth graders be able to have dances, and, you know, if there's a dance as- associated with, you know, here's the money for subsidies for Camp Kiev, then that will make that very clear to parents in advance.
Well, the fifth grade just had a dance for Cedar Dale that was a huge success, it was my first.
People were at the door.
My first dance, I, I couldn't believe it. You leave in the morning and you come back at night and you have disco.
And you gotta thanks, and you gotta thanks Scott Jones, because he, Scott, Scott did it, and he just gets those bubbles going, and the fog, and the lights, and it, it's just, and he donates his time, so he's an amazing.
Those dances have always been very successful.
Yes.
I hate to see the dances go away, because the kids really have so much fun, and it's not at that age, it's not the, I mean, maybe there is the boy-girl aspect, but it's all, the girls are all.
That was a family dance.
No, but then the older kids do, the older, one's still, but they, um, they just all have so much fun, you know, and it's.
I've chaperoned a lot of sixth grade dances, they dance the last half hour. They, the boys are on one side and the girls are on the other for the remainder of the time, just saying. It's, 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 it's different, it's funny, you know, it's a funny thing, but we will continue to, to work with, you know, those kind of opportunities, as long as they're developmentally appropriate.
Of course.
Okay, so, eh, enough about Kiev right now? So, let's go to the core academic subject schedule, okay? So, we've been working on this, um, and as we said, we're, there are five sixth grade classrooms. Currently at the middle school, there are four academic subjects, plus they have an enrichment and enhancement block. But at the new school, we have five sections, right? So, we, we are planning to have con- content-specific focus. Um, the teachers, uh, it'll be interesting, because there are a couple of teachers who are coming over, one has an elementary certification, which means all subjects can be taught, the other has a specific, uh, content certification, so that's consistent with the state. The other has a specific uh, content certification, so that's consistent with the state. If you're gonna teach, you know, one area, you know, is all the time, then, you know, having a content certification. If you're, especially if you're a middle school, is, is required, okay? Because it's an elementary school and I think that's, I think that's what we have to make sure people understand is. We aren't running the sixth grade as a middle school grade anymore, it's an element, so these, they're not middle school students now, they're elementary students. So, in order to have the transition, in order to, you know, work with kids that we think in a developmental way and, you know, obviously we're, we're. You know, we're still gonna do everything we can to make sure that they have content-specific instruction in math. Reading, English Language Arts, sorry, um, Science and Social Studies. In Language Arts, again, we're all about transition, so currently cho- children have ninety minutes of English Language Arts in their, built into their day. And that makes sense, because they're reading, most of them are learning to read, but many are reading to learn. Right, they already know how to read, they're learning how to access information. So, the intention here would be that the kids would have two language arts blocks. So, they, they might, they will have two different teachers, but the way we'll set it up. And again, we want the teachers to be involved in this discussion, but, so, we'll do the standards-based. Somebody will do the standards-based ELA, which is integrating reading and writing, you know, using the literature novels and things that they're using now. The curriculum from the sixth grade will travel to, to the Pembroke. So, it's not a completely new curriculum, okay? Uh, with the exception of math, might be, math is different, but the rest of the, like, if you're the science teacher, you're teaching the sixth grade. District Science Curriculum, whether you're based at the middle school or whether you're based at Pembroke. Um, so in English Language Arts, the way we're thinking about splitting it now is. Because in forty-five minutes, so they'll do the, what they do at the middle school now for their, they have vocabulary program, their, their novels that they read. But then the other period, they'll go to the English Language Arts teacher, who will probably be doing more small group reading, be doing some literature circles. Reading extensions, um, connections to writing, you know, reading and writing kind of connections. To give very, much more specific instruction in some aspects of Language Arts. So, they'll, they'll be getting a double dose of Language Arts, which they currently do not get at the middle school. Okay, so that's how we're gonna, that's how we're gonna deal with, uh, with that.
Now, is that tied into the MCAS?
It's tied into the standards.
But, um, you know, in, with our MCAS, the writing portion of it, like the long essay.
Right.
It, it will, it will build stamina uh, for that writing, I mean, that's one thing we see, you know, that we really have to develop that. Ability for children to write and have that stamina to sustain them through something like a standard, standardized test.
Right.
So, it will, but.
And to know how to break up the writing, instead of just.
That's right.
Writing, knowing when to end a paragraph, begin a new one and.
Right, you can have much more specific, you have more time now to have much more specific, because in forty-five minutes, if you're trying to do your reading and your writing. And your vocabulary and all those things, it's not a lot of time, so this will give us the, and again, that's what kids are getting through grade five. So, it makes sense to have that same opportunity, although if we're doing the subject-specific teaching, we can't, we don't have the beauty like we have now of. Two and a half hours of one teacher teaching Language Arts, so we, so, you know, that's our intention and then when kids get to seventh grade, then they're in the. Then they're in the subject area classes anyway.
Right.
And they, they won't have a double block in seventh grade, but they may not need a double block in seventh grade.
Double block.
And years ago, again, learning the history of all this, years ago, they actually, when during, when time when John Foché was here, they did have a second reading block. They had, they had two reading blocks. And, uh, so, you know, it'll, it'll help in a lot of ways, it'll help with, you know, the, you know, our English Language Arts scores, but it also will help with that transition. So, we make sure enough kids get enough reading and writing, because that is. Literacy and numeracy, you know, are the, are the function of what we need. Um, so there will be a homeroom period at the beginning and ending of every day, so we do wanna continue with a responsive classroom. And, and some sort of advisory, but sometimes you can work your advisory into responsive classroom. Um, and at the end of the day, the students will go back to their homeroom, so that they kind of close their day. Make sure homework is all where it needs to be, you know, um.
How long is that in the morning and the afternoon?
Well, we're still working on the time blocks, but we're thinking twenty minutes each.
At the most, no more than that, because, again, when you're looking at classes, you know, the content, math, science, social studies would need to be at least forty-five to fifty minutes. You know, you wanna have a nice chunk of time, it's like the backward design, you have to kind of work your way back from there. So, just again, a place so that children feel like they've made a connection with a particular teacher. And then at the end of the day, to, again, the, you know, to make sure agenda books are filled out. Children are going home knowing they've, you know, got everything with them and they're not rushing out.
So, at the, at the end of the day, when they go back, does that teacher have listed on the board? The children's homework assignment?
That's what I was wondering.
No, no, because you're gonna get that in every grade, in every class.
Okay, but my understanding is now they do that.
Would she be aware?
Go back at the middle school and they have it.
Do you know about that, do they have an end, do they, do they go back at the end of the day to a particular teacher? Sixth grade does.
And it would list at that class what their homework is, which I think is, is a, a great thing, because then the kids can actually open their agenda book. Because you know how classes are at the end, that's usually when the teachers are assigned the homework, the bell rings and see you later.
Well, that would be something the sixth grade teachers would, would decide, you know, so, I mean, we, we don't wanna micro.
Sixth grade is out five minutes early too.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, that's right.
Yep.
The whole year?
But you won't have to worry about that now.
Right.
Cause they're not gonna be in the middle school.
They'll be the oldest.
The oldest kids in the class, not the youngest.
So, the purpose, so you do that, so they get out?
They get a head start, it takes them a little longer to take it.
They're learning the ropes, we're gonna know the ropes in sixth grade, so, I think, um, I think the, the purpose of it. It, again, the sixth grade teachers, if that's what has worked for them and that's what they wanna continue, I don't think we have objection to it.
Exactly, but the other, you know, the other um, issue is that teachers will be probably using more technology. So, you know, they will be posting more of those assignments and being able to utilize the technology.
Right, because the, the um, fifth and sixth grade kids are gonna have a one-to-one, they're gonna be working with, with laptops, that'll be assigned to them. Okay, so, so you have this, so that we have the, the block, then, as we talked about before, we'll have a specialist block and that's where. K through five will, will, every day will rotate through the specials. And then the sixth grade will have the band or chorus opportunity. And then, I think Margaret calls it win time, what I need, but it's an intervention period. Um, that will be built in during the day, so that, um, students who need extra help will get extra help and. You know, others may get enrichment or others may work on things in their, you know, in their, in their classroom, whatever, you know, that's the beauty. That's the beauty of a team is that in an elementary school is you have flexibility. You're not dependent on, oh, I only have this time because the high school schedule, you know, says that I, it's gonna, the bell's gonna ring. You have more flexibility in an elementary setting, so, they might decide we're gonna have something special once a month on a Friday afternoon. And then they'll adjust their schedule, it's not gonna affect anybody else but them, so, that's a good thing, to have more opportunity. So, that's, that's how we're seeing the, the schedule and as, as we talked about, you know. Margaret will be, can be chatting with the teachers on, and she'll put the specialist schedule together with input from the specialists and. You know, once we make the big decisions, then the people that are affected by the decisions and have expertise in certain things can.
Okay, tell me about the bell.
What bell?
Tell me, um.
We won't have a bell.
Tell me how they're gonna know, they go from class to class.
Cause the teachers are gonna know that the class is over.
Okay, is that what it, so that's what it was, it's gonna be, they're just gonna say, okay, class is over.
That's what I would envision.
There'll be no bells, we want no bells.
At ten o'clock, it's time to go to someplace else. Cause remember, the, the rest of the school isn't going to be operating in that model, so I, again, would not envision that we would have bells.
I know we talked about, we did talk about like a.
Signal?
We did, talk about at one point a signal, I, I don't.
I don't think we're thinking about a signal.
I'm not saying I prefer a bell.
I mean, because again, we're, you have to envision, you know, five classrooms, five teachers, so, they're, they're right there. So, you open your door, ready to go, I mean, you know, so it's not, it's not like high school.
School, they're, they're literally.
If a teacher wanted to, they could probably design their own little, you know, iPad.
Yeah.
Noise, so, at ten o'clock. I'm not, I'm not worried, it is, because again, you know, they're, they're right there, so it's just, okay, off you go.
As I said.
But that's how they are at the middle school too.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I mean, those class, you know, when the kids go up to the middle school and they're all nervous about, oh, I have three minutes, it's like. You walk out the door, you take a left and your classroom is there, you know, like when I went to school, we had to run upstairs, we had to go through a resource center to, you know, I mean. The kids have no idea, so, this is not.
They're not gonna have the same fears, because they're gonna stay in the school they know, so it's really just a matter of going to the other side of the hall.
Right, I know.
That's really what it is. Even though I still get nervous at parent night, I'm always like to the kids, okay, so where is this?
Yeah, but that's a bigger environment, I think you're gonna find this a little easier to navigate.
Right.
Um, okay, and, and I didn't add it here, but, one of the, one of the things that we're continuing to talk about, it reminded my, me today, Margaret. That we, we need to put on our list to talk again with the fifth grade teachers.
Yes.
Yeah, because we have to follow back with them, we were talking about, you know, did they wanna do some kind of switching, but not obviously at this. This, to this degree, so they, they were chatting with us about that, so we have to circle back and talk more with them again.
Like they did in the past.
Not, not to the same extent of what they did in the past, but with some.
It was just one class.
It might be some, yeah, some teachers have done it, yeah, exactly, so we, we have to look at that and try to figure out how that'll go. Um, okay, so then, talking about activities. So, some folks have been wondering about, uh, some of the current fifth grade, like fun activities, like Cedar Dale, for example. Um, and then, you know, I think our, our discussions have, um, have basically yielded again. That this fifth grade class that we're talking about will go to Cedar Dale. Um, I think Margaret wants a little more opportunity to talk about, you know, how that looks in the future. Like, it, does it become a sixth grade trip then? Is Cedar Dale even something we wanna do, especially some of these things that we're talking about with STEM? Is there something we wanna replace it with? You know, we just don't have all of that information yet, so we can't answer that, but what we can say is. Next year's, this current fifth grade is going to go to, is going to go to Cedar Dale. This fifth grade class will, you know, will have, uh, the play is another question people have asked about. Um, I think that the thinking is to transition the play to sixth grade in the future.
So, is this fifth grade class going to Cedar Dale?
Yes, yes.
This year?
Yes.
This fifth grade now, in three months will be going to Cedar Dale.
Okay, there was some question about whether or not that was still gonna happen, it, it will still happen.
Yeah. That was always.
Red Sox Day will still happen, you know, um, the, I think that Margaret's working with the different teachers, different grade levels, you know. As to, you know, are we gonna continue to do Famous Americans or Invention Convention and all of that kind of stuff? But that input, that's input that's coming from the teachers as to where, what, what their plan is, um, for this year. Um, Red Sox Day, I believe, is gonna happen this year, if we ever don't have snow everywhere. Um, but, um, that, that's just something that, you know, again, there, there's people that need to be involved in those discussions. But the most immediate concerns are for the current fifth grade, and so, there's, there shouldn't be any concerns, whatever they've been used to doing. But the plan is to, to do it. Um. Okay, so let's see, what else do we have here, Margaret? Um, oh, and then there was a question about the play, so I think that the thinking is that the play will become a sixth grade play. But then there's gonna be a little gap, so the, 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 the fifth grade students are doing the fifth grade play. So then, the plan would be that next year.
These students.
These same students.
Musical type performance.
Have like a musical performance, get ready for that Tyler, and then, instead of a play, and then the following year.
Grade would do the play.
So, the kids are in fourth grade.
Okay.
So, everyone.
Yeah, so nobody misses it, nobody misses it, it just transitions it.
Exactly, right.
Okay, what I see, what I see is going on here, and I appreciate it, is these fifth grade kids. That. Like our, like my, all my fifth grade kids had all that special experience, cause this was their last year, and I'm glad that you're still doing that. Because I think it's important that these kids, because they are special, they're the last class in that old building.
That's right, that's right.
You know, I, I appreciate that you're doing that, that, you know, they're still gonna feel.
Right.
Like. It, they're a special group, it's.
Right, and then they move into the special sixth grade.
Yeah, I, no, I think it's great, so the fifth grade, this year will do a play, next year they will do.
Like a musical.
A musical, and then.
Not a musical play, but like a, but maybe a performance.
Yeah, like a variety show or something, you know.
Yeah, not like Grease or anything, which would be like a musical play.
No, and then, but then, so the fourth graders this year will do a play.
Okay.
So, when they're the sixth grade, so, you know, just, everyone will do the play, just.
We all chuckle, but these decisions are not easy, I mean, they take, there's a zillion of them. So, that's why we wanna make sure, you know.
This is what Pembroke is all about though, it's like when you go, this is what all of our kids have been hearing about, like, when I get to Pembroke, when I get. You know, with third grade, they do something special, I forget what it is.
Recorder.
What?
Recorder.
I will tell you.
The recorder, huh?
Oh, yes, yes, I remember the recorder.
I was like this all the time, every day, I'm like, put the recorder away.
But it's special to the children.
Especially when they get belts for it or something, right, they get all these different colored belts, no, they had a lot of fun with that.
It is important that we keep all this.
But I mean, for the past four years, or three years, or whatever, they've, you know, seen themselves as moving toward the fifth grade. And the fifth grade is gonna be a really special year, and they are kind of moving on, I mean, they really are.
Right.
Like everybody at Pembroke, but still, they're moving on, so it's great to give them the sense that, yes, that's. Well, it would be hard to, again, you know, in their lives, last year, looking forward to this year. It would be hard to all of a sudden say, oh, you're not gonna, you're gonna do it, but you're not doing it this year, that, that's a long time for a child to wait. They, they wouldn't have known, okay, I just have to wait two years, so, and many things were, you know, already in the works, so, again, it makes sense to, let's just do it. It is their last year, it's the last year of Pembroke, then moving on, sixth grade, you know, there will be special things about sixth grade. And then, going forward, that sixth grade will be the last year, so you just, your special year, sixth grade and not fifth grade.
Right.
Meanwhile, the curriculum will continue, so, you know, the, the, the enriching, um, activities within the curriculum will still happen. Those may evolve, again, depending on, you know, curriculum decisions, and maybe instead of something, now we have a big something else related to the curriculum. So, those, you know, we just have to, you just don't always know, you know, what's, what, what teachers are going to wanna do, what children are interested in, so.
Right, so, um, in thinking, so we're doing these updates for you and then we're, maybe Pam, I'll talk to you about figuring out ways we can post. Some of these things from the notes on our Facebook page, so people, you know, people know what we're talking about. Um, but there's also, we're, Margaret and, or on the website, or website Pembroke, yep, we, we, um, Margaret and I are planning. Okay, where is it, are planning to have a parent information night for the fifth grade parents, on May sixth.
Okay.
From six thirty to eight, which we'll publicize, and because at that point, we feel like we, we pretty much will have. All the decisions really made, so we'll know like, okay, this, this is how it's all gonna work. We just, you know, parents just hopefully will help, will have trust that we're continuing, and if there are specific questions that parents have about. What about this or what about this, if they just drop us an email, then, you know, Margaret and I meet every Friday. We ch- hold, most of the afternoon, we meet on Friday on this topic. But sometimes we'll invite Julie, if it's curriculum, sometimes we'll invite Joan, if it's budget, sometimes we'll invite Donna, if it's special ed, sometimes we'll talk to Peter. Because, you know, it affects his building and we're talking transition, but we, we, we're systematically moving through all of the decisions. That we believe have to be made, but if there are things that parents or teachers or anyone else has, in, wants information about. It'd be great if they just drop us an email and then we'll add it to our list of things to talk about.
And does your school council help too, like, is this?
Well, the school, the school council, um, they sometimes will bring up topics, again, you know, that they may hear. But these, we're actually working on the handbook, because that is another big project, you know, we're taking three handbooks. And combining it to one, and, you know, when we're really looking through the handbooks, much of it is, not much, um, some of the material, it's outdated. Um, it, it just doesn't belong, it's changed, so, we're really going through, we started actually with discipline. And spent a couple meetings really looking at how we want that to look. Um, just kind of cleaning up, you know, taking appendix out of the body of the handbook, you know, making that, you know, an appendix in the back.
An index, a table of contents.
Right, but even the table of contents, um, the way it is now.
I love table of contents.
Right, and, and the way it is now, it's, because things have been added and shifted, there's really no rhyme or reason, you know, if you wanna look for something, you're.
Doesn't necessarily read as an elementary handbook either.
Especially if it's gonna be posted on the website and then, you know, it's really, yeah, helpful. Really, this is our work and then, um, next month, we will start, again, do you remember, um, did we mention it here about the MCAS?
We didn't mention it.
Okay, alright. MCAS may be released a little bit later next year, because. MCAS may be released a little bit later next year, because some school districts are using Park. So, just so they can coordinate, it, they, it may not be ready. So they may push it out a little bit. So therefore, I'm hoping, thinking, that it might give me a couple extra weeks in the fall. So that now, now would be the time we would normally have the parent survey. Because we want that information to put into the SIP. You know, that goes into writing some of the goals. So, our next meeting, we would like to start crafting the parent survey. So this is a little bit late, but again, knowing we don't really need that information for a little bit of time, you know, it's been fine. So we're working on the handbook, then we'll work on the parent survey, and then, um, you know, finish up the handbook.
So this parent, this parent meeting would really, you know, be able to, you know, give parents all of the information that we're, you know, that we're intending them to, to, they feel, we feel they need to know. And then, if we have input as to what they need to know, then we can incorporate that. Um, and then, just, uh, on, on the topic of Pembroke, and then I'm just gonna quickly do a couple brief things on Pearly. Um, you know, our continuing discussions are on the actual moving plan, right? So, you know, we, we know we're, Joan's getting a, a bid out to, um, for moving companies. And then we know we need to talk to the teachers about, you know, what can be packed, and where, and in what way. So we're continuing to work on that as we have more information. Um, the pick-up and drop-off procedures are a big discussion. In fact, we're working with the district safety committee on that, which includes the chief of police, the fire chief.
Oh, good.
Highway superintendent, so highway surveyor, Margaret, bus, company. And, um, you know, that, that discussion is, is ongoing. So those are things that we are continuing to discuss. And then in terms of, just quickly in Pearly, um, that, you know, and we've decided that Amanda Harding, who is our current preschool teacher, is going to be the preschool director. And we talked to you before about, as you know, Amanda's been out on maternity leave, but she's been doing some work for us, um, during that time. So she's gonna return in September, but when we talked about the hybrid class, where we were gonna have the two teachers. The reason for that is that there's a portion of the day when Amanda could then be freed up to do the, the work of the director. And of course, Camille Early, I told you, is staying there, so Camille would be working, uh, side by side with her. Um, and then, um, she would also receive a small stipend, because she, there'd be work, quite a bit of work outside of the school day as well. She will report to Margaret. So, so Margaret, as the elementary principal, will still be attached to the preschool.
Sure.
But she won't do the day, the reason why I'm the director, is she won't do the day-to-day operation of the preschool. So that, you know, that is important, 'cause.
That was like back when, like Janet Art was head of the preschool.
Maybe, maybe something like that.
There was a principal at that time, and that worked so great.
Yeah, so I think that, you know, that, that should make the preschool people feel comfortable, and there's a point of contact. And so we feel like we're setting that up for failure. Amanda is very interested in administration, is, you know, taking force to success.
Yeah, not failure.
Set it up for success.
Did you know you said failure?
I meant success.
There's a lot, there's a lot here.
Thank you, success. Well, success is what we want. So she is also interested in administration, and she wants to, you know, get certified as supervisor-director, and she's willing to do that with two small boys at home, because this is something, a direction she wants to move in.
Maybe she'll bring her kids to the preschool.
And then, of course, we'd be adding the extra preschool, and, you know, we'd be, um, be working with, um, all of the programs there. Um, so, the, the library, uh, Georgie Fazio is going to be moving over to Pembroke. So there'll be two librarians at, in the media center and working there. But we still wanna provide support and library for the, um, preschool. And Georgie does that right now. So what we're, what we're going to be doing is, um, Georgie, you don't know what the schedule is, but maybe two mornings a week, she will start her day, or end her day, we don't quite know what will happen. Start or end her day at Pearly, and she'll do what she does now. She'll read to the kids, she'll help them pick out books. And we will, um, keep a preschool library, um, in the, you know, not, not where it is right now, but in the room that's beside, where the little well is.
The reading room.
The reading room. We'll, 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 Ju-, 'cause Julie's gonna, we're gonna use those rooms for, for different professional development.
Like the stages?
Where, is, is that the stage?
Yeah, yeah, where they do the pictures. They take pictures.
Yes, I see, okay. So, and then we'll create, we'll create, you know, some nice stacks of books around the side, and then the kids can go up, and they can go to the library, and as I said, Georgie can, can work with them. And we did talk to Georgie about that. She's, she was very happy about that.
I was gonna say, 'cause I know she was nervous about leaving Pearly.
She's very happy. Um, and then, let's see, oh, this is back on the Pembroke. So, so one of the things, you know, you have to think of every little detail. So one of the things is, how do you determine who gets what room? What teachers are in what room? You know, I mean, there's a lot, a lot of ways to do that. Do you do it by seniority? Then that's not fair to the young teachers, right? Do you do it by, uh, well, what's, end of the room? Do you, you wanna look at this woods, or this woods? I mean, you know, who do you wanna work with? I mean, there's all kinds of like nuances of it. So after looking at lots of different, uh, thoughts on this, we decided we're just gonna do a lottery. So on, um, May ele-, March eleventh, uh, the teachers will, at their professional gathering in the morning, you know, we'll do the, here are all the numbered rooms. Here's the receptacle, you know, pick, pick your na-, pick your number out, and this is your room. And then, we wanna do that, and we, we are trying to get the, an opportunity for the teachers to go into the school before it's fully done. But I don't want that to happen till the floors are in. So they're working on the floors. So they did say that, to, to me, late March is probably, you know, fairly possible. So if we do the lottery on the eleventh, then when they have a chance to go visit the school, they'll at least be able to say, oh, this is my room.
They can bond.
They can bond with their room.
Their room.
Um, so.
They must be dying to get in there.
They are.
They are, and you know, I, but you, but you don't, you don't want, I, I know, I, I keep telling people, you know what? I want you to go into that school and go, wow, I can't wait to get here. It's a construction zone.
Correct. I agree.
You know, you don't want them to win and say, like, what's gonna go in there? Oh, my God, where's my thing? Where's my wall gonna go?
Yeah.
No, you, you don't want that. You want them to walk in and say, oh, I see, I put my rug here, I'll put my desks here. It, 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 trust me when I tell you, it, it really will be better when they can go in and then go, wow, I can't wait to get here. So, but the lottery is something we're gonna do on March eleventh, and we feel like that's the fairest way, uh, way to do it.
When are you gonna do a pa-, like, for the, for families to go in?
Well, I think that that's something we're talking about with, I mean, I, we have to wait till it's substantially complete, and we know when we take it over, and, but yeah, I wouldn't, and then, of course, we, we have to make sure that the furniture comes in and gets set up, and then the technology gets installed, which is, which is gonna happen in the summer. So, you know, certainly, as, as, as soon as we have the go-ahead and the okay, you know, that everything is where it needs to be, then, yeah, we'll set up, we'll set up tours, and, yeah. We absolutely know that people are anxious about it and excited to see it, and they are gonna really be very impressed when they get the opportunity to go. I can tell you, Margaret and I go probably every two or three weeks, or, you know.
I know, we asked for another tour.
Yeah, the building, the building committee asked for another tour, too, and, and they suggested that they do it in March, because they said, because they said, you know, all the snow, and, you know, they're, they're putting in the Trazo floor, they're putting in, all the floors now are back on schedule, they're putting the floors in. So that's what, that was their suggestion to the building committee, to, to, to go in March. I don't know if you wanna go with them. We could certainly coordinate that, we could certainly coordinate that visit. Um, but yeah.
Just a thought was for parent information night in the fall.
Yes.
Might wanna invite the citizens of the town, and have all those people who aren't parents go to one place and have one tour guide. Just an idea I just had. 'Cause I, I think, I mean, a lot of.
Probably wouldn't use the, yeah, we'd have to have, I think we'd have a separate time for them.
Yeah, separate time.
I'm very certain the building committee is planning.
I think the building committee is planning, though.
A community open house.
Right.
That's great.
Okay.
It's sort of their venue, because it, you know.
They probably are, that it hasn't come up in a meeting.
They've worked long and hard for that.
Okay, a separate community open house would be better.
Well, I don't, I don't even know if it's separate, just an opportunity for anyone to tour, you know, because again, it's, it belongs to the town.
Belongs to the town, exactly.
So, um, Michael raised something that I thought was interesting, is, you know, he's got a preschooler. So he, we were chatting, chatting about it, 'cause he came to preschool night, and he said, I don't think I'm gonna be able to take advantage of it, because I need something beyond the school day. I, I couldn't sign up my daughter up if I couldn't have an after-school program. So we had, at the time when we talked about this, we had said, well, we're definitely gonna have a before-school program. But we were trying to see whether, whether people wanted an after-school program. This is a long day for, for little preschoolers. Um, but after Margaret had her information night, there were a number of parents. That night, several people asked her. So, we're, we're saying now, we're going to offer, so when she goes to her, um, lottery night, she's gonna announce that there will be an after-school program to four thirty, thinking that that might be something that a, a parent might hesitate to sign up, if they didn't know that that was something that they could plan on and count on, so.
Did you tell Michael that?
Uh, well, I haven't yet.
Wow, yeah, that'll be good.
Chatted with him about it. But, um, it made us think that, and then when Margaret heard from like six other people.
Six people that evening said, are you gonna have it? I said, there's the interest, so we'll have it.
Well, look at our after-school programs. We, I mean, our after-school programs have been growing and solid for, so there's a need. There's a need in the community for it.
So, and really, that's all it was. Not that, you know, we didn't want to, but you can't offer something if you think, oh, only two children, it just, we wouldn't be able to run it.
Can't afford it.
But when six came up that evening and said, oh, I'd be interested, well, then, there you go.
Yeah.
That does show. So, um, again, on our list is to discuss extended day in both buildings.
That's coming up on the next.
But the night of the, the afternoon of the pre-K lottery, I will have a sign-up. So regardless if we know who, you know, again, how it will work, there's a parent's name and number, and they'll know that there will be a program, and they'll be contacted, and we'll get that information. So, you know, I'll put a sign up.
Okay. So, that's it for this time. Well, next time, we'll have more to report. We'll try to get some information out.
Um, we do have two parents here that I'm, thank you for coming and staying. Did you, did you have like any question?
I wanted to thank you first of all for keeping Kia for the sixth grade. I think that's really important. A lot of us really, um, we're looking forward to with the kids, we're really looking, so I appreciate you guys keeping that.
Welcome. I mean, we clearly heard at the, you know, heard at the coffee, that there was, that was interest, it was interested in that, so.
Yeah. Um, my other thought was with the sixth grade going in to the new school, and the, the, the old school coming down. Right now, there's no place for the kids to go outside and have recess, when there's no stone on the ground, per se, that. Um, they play on the cement now, and a lot of them get hurt and scraped. What are we gonna do with the, um, when they go into the new school? Where are they gonna play?
Playground will be open.
They will be open.
The playgrounds will be open. In fact, the playgrounds right now are all installed, but the, the, the surface, the ground surface, it cannot be installed till it gets warmer. So that, that'll all, that'll all be done before they consider the building substantially complete.
And there's some pictures of the play structures on, up on Facebook. They are snow-covered. So it's a little hard, you know, but they are there. Those are the new ones.
Oh, that's cool.
Right, and, you know, there's some tarred.
There's snow covered, so you really can't get that great of sense.
Twelve feet under.
Right.
You can see the kindergarten.
The one, the playground facing you will be the kindergarten, and then the, the older children is on the other side.
In the back.
You wouldn't be able to see it.
Yes, you wouldn't see it. But it's a, it's a fairly extensive playground. So, you know, and, and again, we, we also envision that the, the one and two kids, the kids in grades one and two may play on the smaller one as well. It's appropriate for them. That's how they designed it. They designed it for lower grades.
It's a nice safe surface.
Right, and there's, and the whole back is really tarred, but, you know, it's all paved. So, you know, it, it's not as great as grass. But when those fields come in, there's gonna be lots of places for people to play. It's gonna be awesome.
Good, that's good to know.
You had just briefly touched on math. You, you said something about math, and then kind of said, we'll come back. I don't know if this is a curriculum question, but I wasn't sure if you had, I know when we had our coffee, you weren't sure yet about, are we gonna level, are we not gonna level? How's math, do you know how math is being handled?
I don't think, I don't think we have decided that we're officially going to level. What Julie is gonna talk about briefly when she comes up is, uh, work that's being done on, um, the, with the math department on, um, maybe transitioning to a different math program that starts in sixth grade. Um, so it's gonna really depend a, a lot on that, you know, whether or not, and it also's gonna depend, I mean, our, our commitment is if there are kids who really, really need a strong, you know, like a different kind of math, you know, focus, then we're not gonna hold kids back. But we're not necessarily going to, to level them, because what happens when you do that is it affects, it affects the, the grouping in, in all of the other subjects. And our, our hope is that, as we said before, that we're gonna have teachers who are gonna be able to meet the range in the classroom. Um, if that's not the case, then we'll have to make a different adjustment. Um, but I think in the, in the middle school, that was sort of a decision, we decided we were gonna, we were gonna group there, because it was a tran-, a real transition to, to the seventh grade. So, we're not, we're just not sure yet, Amanda, you know, it's gonna really depend on the kids, and what makes sense. Right. But the, the, but we are looking at maybe a new math curriculum, which would come before the school committee for, for review. So it wouldn't necessarily be everyday math, but it would be a, a math curriculum, so. Does that, does that answer your question? Yeah. But if you have other questions, or other parents have questions, if you just drop us an email, or, or see us, call us, and we, we're, we wanna be able to answer the questions that people have, 'cause we can't just anticipate that everybody might, you know, have questions that we haven't heard.
And there's still a lot of things that are unknown, with like the new science and all the books that may come in, so we're still not sure on those yet.
On, on what?
On the books and everything, on the new books or curriculum.
For science?
Science.
Well, Julie, this, you can answer that, Julie. The science books, they'd be, be using the ones the sixth grade currently uses.
They'll use what they have now, and we made that decision with the science vertical team, because we wanted to see what got finalized in the new standards. We're working out of the draft ones, but we wanted to make sure, before we allocated a lot of money towards anything new, we wanted to just make sure that those standards were stable, um, and, and accepted by the state, so. But we're, believe me, I mean, the science teachers are looking.
Yeah.
They're certainly looking to see what's out there, and what they, they're very interested in bringing in materials, and.
Right. Yeah, so.
Work being done on the side.
Doesn't really make sense to, doesn't really make sense to do a new science curriculum, if your standards are gonna change. Because what if you change the curriculum, and then it doesn't line up with the standards that get developed? That's, seems like that's a, a little silly. So.
We've seen a little bit of a shifting happen with ELA and math, the way they, they transitioned out of the old frameworks into the new ones. And so, um, we were glad that we've kind of waited, you know, especially with math, to make sure that the standards were stabilized and accepted and adopted by the state before we really started to look and see, you know, how our curriculum, uh, was aligned, but also what, what more things would, would we need based on these new standards. So we take the same process and apply that to science, and science is a.
So, just to go back to the leveling thing, I think the one thing that's always been a question for me in the leveling. To me, if you're gonna level, and kids are gonna work at an accelerated pace, then you're not just staying with that grade-level curriculum. If, if March comes, and you're done with the fifth grade curriculum, you go into the sixth grade curriculum. That isn't how the leveling works. You get to the same place at the end of the year with the leveling system. So to me, I have to see whether or not I think there's real value to that. I mean, what really is the difference? So that, that's why I've always wondered about that. So I know part of why we did it was because that's what parents have really been pushing for. But it's, but I've looked at it and watched it, and I'm thinking, well, I just wanna make sure I'm confident that it's really get, getting the value that we really intended it to have. I don't know that it accelerates students' learning. Right? So, so that, to me, if you're gonna level, you're leveling so you can accelerate the kids who are really capable of going at a fast, not only a faster pace, but at more sophisticated content. So that's deeper, yeah, so that's, I think that's why we're still, we can't say, oh, yeah, we're definitely doing that, 'cause we're not quite positive. You know, we, we do wanna meet the needs of the, of the top kids, however. So we're still figuring out with the teachers how that can be done. Okay, thanks.
Thank you guys for letting us talk.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thanks for coming.
I know, thanks for coming out in this weather.
I don't even know what it's doing out there.
Thank you, Margaret.
Drive home safely.
Now, Julie, come on. Julie has some kind of, I think, exciting kind of things to chat about.
Talked about curriculum at nine thirty.
That's all right.
Looking forward to it.
And if you don't, Julie, we can always, you know, continue with the next time, if you feel like it's gonna be.
Well, you know, I tried to keep it, um, tried to keep it short, only, uh, because we are, last year, we, we started to do, we were doing an incredible amount of work, um, aligning to the standards, creating units, trying to identify what we needed. Um, and this year, we're implementing, and, you know, we, Carol and I always talk about, there's a difference between alignment and implementation. And so, right now, um, we're doing all the work that we talked about last year. So it's kind of a different presentation tonight, which is, um, a little bit more, um, on the side of just showing you some of the things that, that we are currently working on, based on our conversations from last year. So, let's see if I can get this to come up. Yeah, go ahead.
Keep on going.
Okay. So last year, we did, um, through the math and ELA vertical teams, we aligned all of our units and assignments, assessments, things like that, to the standards. Um, we have been working on that for a couple of years, but last year, we, we had really, uh, worked to update all the trajectories. Um, and that's what we're implementing now, our updated trajectories, including the units that we revised to focus on reading and literature, informational. to focus on reading and literature, informational text, the three modes of writing that are embedded within the ELA frameworks and different components of research that are aligned to each grade level. Um, and so we're also along with that, you know, I, I almost say parallel to that, we're working through the, the RTI program that we're developing in the district and developing supports for small group instruction along these standards. So that our students are, are learning the standards, but also getting on support on the standards that they need support with. So, um, it's kind of two things happening at the same time and it's, it's really good work. It's just a lot of it. You know, we're doing a lot of things um at the same time. But I think for us, it's really, this year for ELA, um, it's really about implementation and, and looking at how you take the standards and build the curriculum from that and what the units look like with this revision and what this, what the writing calls for now as opposed to what we may have done three or four years ago. Um, and so that's been really exciting work. It's very fun.
One of the things that Margaret and I heard at the coffee, Julie wasn't at the coffee, but we heard the coffee was from one parent, she said, I, I am so happy with what my fifth grader is doing in writing. She said, I wish my seventh grader had the opportunity to have it because it's so different. And the writing that, you know, the focus, the, the, the ability for the, my student to, to write is just really noticeably better and different. She specifically said, I wish my seventh grader had had this, this new work that you're doing because she said, it's, I notice it, it's making a difference. So I was happy to see that. Very good compliment.
That's great. Well, I don't know how, I don't know how to top that. That's the greatest thing you could hear. Um, in mathematics, we've done the same thing. We have updated our trajectories. Uh, we worked through, you know, everyday math has a spiral, so we worked through the spiral to identify what the grade level critical areas are. So when the standards are, are aligned and adopted by the state, they'll tell you, grade four, these are the four critical areas you need to focus on. So, we used that and looked through that lens at the curriculum and said, okay, let's determine where these lessons and units are within the, within the units that we're teaching and, and make sure we're really content specific about those critical areas and make sure that we're targeting them um effectively with the kids. So, we've done that work. We're implementing that this year. We're also looking at assessments and how, how to use our assessments to identify needs that children may have. And so, um, similar to what we were doing in ELA, we're looking at, um, where do we need to develop small group instruction for our students in math based on these critical areas? Because we know they're not gonna change. We know that each grade level builds on the last, so how can we ensure that we're supporting all our students through that trajectory upwards? And so, um, to do that kind of work, we're, we're using all the curriculum that we have, but we're also looking at perhaps updating our middle school curriculum because of the shifts that have happened at the middle school level specifically. And so, you know, when we get to the point where we would talk more about that, I'll certainly bring, um, members of the math vertical team here to talk about that um, for any questions people may have. But right now, what I've done through my curriculum directors group is, is ask, you know, thirty or forty different communities or curriculum directors, people who have jobs like I do, what, how did you uh address the math changes at the middle school level? And, and so I've gotten a ton of feedback on different programs that they're using, so our vertical team will go out and look at the different programs. We've brought a couple of programs in to start looking at them and kind of comparing them to the lessons that we have. And so we're piloting a few lessons out of those things that we have right now. Um, and just trying to get a general idea of what those changes look like in the classroom in the, in the construction of lessons and things like that. So, we'll certainly give you updates on that as we progress through the year. Um, and I know that the math people are dying to talk about it, but we wanted to have more experience with some of the things that we've, you know, been looking at and researching and before we really had a conversation about it. But uh it's really good work and they're very excited about it. Um, we've also implemented iPads, some iPads at, at the middle school level for students who need additional support at the middle school level. So we, uh, we had uh some teachers request some iPads so that they could just work one-on-one with students and we find that that's, that's very successful. Um, they've had some great experiences and, and they'll come and talk about that as well as a, as a mode of remediation. And I know that with the new Pembroke, we'll have a lot of technology, so we're thinking about how that could work as we, you know, look at some of the technology needs that we'll have when the new school opens, so. Kind of doing it in different places, but it will come together pretty nicely, I think. Um, for, just for ELA, here are some of the uh new units that we've updated. I mean, obviously there are more, but I wanted to just give you a sense of, of what the students are working on, um, when it comes to reading and writing built within, um, the same unit. Our units are crafted using the understanding by design model. We were trained by Jay McTie. We even brought our curriculum director, uh, well, Carol and I brought all of our curriculum department heads uh to a training and our literacy coaches to see Jay McTie and he spoke a lot about the design that he used to create the units that we're using um, that he's talking about all over the world. He's gone to China, he's gone to countries and, um, all across the United States, talking about the units that we're actually, we are implementing in, in the classroom now. So, um, it's getting a lot of traction, which is great, uh, that's exciting.
And does that understanding by design model, um, kinda include specific texts?
Everything, yes.
Recommend specific books?
Specific books, um, certainly, um, writing, writing standards. Could be, could be. But it's really, it's really a design. It's really a way to design curriculum so that you're focusing on standards and, and what your, what our children need at each, at each grade level, what this really looks like, what it really calls for. So it's being more specific than vague, which is, you know, a good thing when it comes to curriculum. Um, so our units include literature, nonfiction, um, trajectories of lessons, teaching strategies, ways to work with children who may not be, um, meeting the standard as you're currently teaching it. How do you differentiate for that? Um, and curriculum embedded assessments and performance tasks and, and just different projects that children can work on to show that they've met the sca, the standard or the scale of what the skill is asking for. Um, our students are reading and writing and analyzing and discussing a lot, um, of literary analysis work. So they're looking at literature and analyzing that and they're able to write about it as well and talk about it. So it's kind of building in a lot of different standards that maybe didn't exist previously, so. Uh, we're hearing a lot of great feedback from our children in terms of, you know, what this looks like. Um, and we'll, we'll definitely share some more information with you. We'll bring the literacy coaches and they can talk about, here's what we're seeing in the classroom. Here are how the, here are our children, how they're responding to it. I got to see the art and poetry unit at the ninth grade and just listening to the kids talk about art and, and look at art from all over the world and, you know, being able to project that and talk about it in relation to literature and poetry, it was amazing. Um, we have the financial literacy unit that we're starting in grade five that incorporates nonfiction and fiction. So our students are learning about money, which is kind of a weird title because you think, oh, financial literacy, like.
Well, I'm thinking those are the high school courses, right?
That is the high school course, but it's a nice tie into high school. But this unit incorporates nonfiction and fiction and so our children are reading about money, how does money work, what, what do people do with money? Um, because it is an interesting concept if you're a child and you don't really know how that all really works. Um, so that's kind of the age where people start to think about money, you know, fifth graders are, they want things.
To their parents.
Yeah, right, so it's a little bit of learning on that end, but also, um, looking at, at stories and literature and, you know, chapter books and how characters deal with different situations around money.
Meaning of money in terms of relationships.
Right, so it's a nice tie in.
A lot of symbolism, there's a lot going on there.
Really fun. It's really, really interesting stuff. It's fun. So, um, so that's just a short, you know, short example for you of some of the things that we're working on, um, that your, your kids are working on.
High school nostalgia.
So working on, um, we're incorporating two new units this year. One is nostalgia in grade eleven and work in grade twelve. And so, um, I'm sure we can get feedback from you. They haven't, uh, taught those two units yet, so those are upcoming.
Does that mean any of the summer books are gonna change or that, no?
No. And, and these are not the only units.
These, no, no.
These are model units that the state, you know, has, has spent, you know, years now developing. But it's actually teachers from across the state that have put together these integrated units and they're, you know, you, some of them are sixty-five pages long. Right, so our teachers, it, this has been, this has been a big, this is not a small task for our teachers.
Not by any stretch.
So I think Julie's just listing for you, we didn't adopt all of the ones that the state had developed. We picked the ones that tied into where, where they, where our curriculum might have had some gaps that we thought, oh, these would be units that would be great to, to fill that gap. So. So the, these are, these are model units, not all that the students focus on at those grades.
No, this is just a really quick example for you, just to get us in some of the titles and, you know, kind of what lies underneath that. Because it doesn't always jive, when you look at, when I looked at financial literacy, I thought, oh geez, I'm not so sure. And then honestly, ended up being one of my favorites, so it's just, you know, how it works sometimes. Okay. Um, also this year, one of our, we do not have science standards adopted yet by the state, but we do have K to twelve, um, STEM initiatives that we're working on, um, because they're important to us. And so, one of the, one of the programs that we're implementing this year along these lines um, is an elementary summer camp called Camp Invention, which is very exciting. Um, lots of fun planning that, a lot of fun for, for our children. Very hands-on, uh, very oriented towards, um, being an active participant in learning about how things work and how to be a creative problem solver. Um, and that really does tie into the grant that we got at the high school level. So it's a nice, it's an earlier, uh, version of what kids will be working on as they get older.
And this is for students going into grades one through six, right?
Six, right.
Do you remember the date?
It will be held at, um, Pearly School since it's our only school open this summer.
Probably gonna be packed this summer.
It will be a very busy summer. I do have some dates that I can, I can.
June twenty-ninth.
June twenty-ninth.
Through July.
Through July, July third, second. I always, yeah. So a four-day camp, but usually it's a five-day camp, but we, um, decided to shorten that because we know families go away um, over the Fourth of July holiday, so we decided to make. Yeah, we decided to make it a four-day camp. Uh, but it's very exciting. It'll be a lot of fun and a lot of information will be coming home about that if it hasn't, um, started to trickle out at the school.
And part of the decision about those dates was not to interfere with the summer programs that we've been running, but at the same time, it was to help parents with that gap.
Yeah, right. That's good.
So that's kind of how we decided on those dates.
Uh, we're also looking at the elementary school, uh, next year, um, to incorporate some school day STEM programs for children. So we're thinking about, um, Mad Science, which is a fun science program for children.
Funded some mad, do you remember that after school? PTA funded, I think Lori Kostusik was very involved in that. Remember how there were some after school, the kids really loved them? I think that was Mad Science. So we're talking about bringing that into the, and PTA, you know, is, has been talking about how they want to spend their money. This is the kind of stuff
Oh, yeah.
that we might want some help from PTA on if we can't get grants for it.
Uh, we're also looking at Science with Scientists. It's a program run out of Northeastern University. Um, and I have some connections there with, with their science people, so we're, we're talking with them about potentially bringing in some speakers for children, uh, to learn about science from scientists. We're looking at, um, creating a maker space, which we know Carol's very excited about. Uh, and that's a place where children can make things and, and so you, we would bring in a lot of different, you know, just tons of different Legos and pieces and just a lot of different components to make interesting, um, inventions. And so we're looking at designating a space for that.
So you could say, make something that you can wear that lights up.
Well, you give it, a child a challenge. Uh, we're also looking at PBS Online STEM, which is a free program, um, that we could implement through PBS. They have done a ton of work, PBS on STEM initiative, so it's, it's worth us looking into what they have to offer at the elementary level. Uh, we're looking at Lego as well to tie in with Lego Robotics, which we're building in at the middle high school. Um, and the environmental field study you talked about a little bit earlier, um, when you were working.
Going to nature's bathroom, yeah.
Right. So at the middle high school, uh, we did build in the science, technology and engineering course. Uh, we have created the after-school STEM club, um, that worked on Future City, but will now be working on robotics. And so we're excited about getting that up and running. Um, and our focus next year will really be on creativity and innovation and a lot of different ways that that can happen. Not necessarily just in the grant that we got, but across curriculum. Um, we're looking at bringing in some innovation mentors and speakers to give children some real-world applications of what this, what is creativity, you know, in this kind of job versus that kind of job and what does innovation look like? How does that happen? It's kind of a mystery concept for a lot of people, um, what does that really look like in the world? So, we'll be working on that and hopefully building some corporate internships. And I'm hoping we can do that through the grant that we got, um, through the state of Massachusetts. So, uh, we recently received a creativity and innovation grant. We were so excited that we got it because it's a competitive grant.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. We're so excited. Um, that does not happen very often and to get this grant is really exciting because.
Because we're not, we're not poor or high need.
Right.
So we don't qualify for most competitive grants.
Right, and so sometimes you have to partner with other districts and that, you know, it becomes this big thing. But, um, but it was competitive and we got it and we're so thankful. And I had to call, after I read the nine seat cuts, I called the state the next morning. I said, just please don't tell me you cut the creativity grant.
And I told you they would never cut that because this is their new focus.
They cut the kindergarten grant, which is not funny, but you know, it was, it was just really interesting to see where they were headed, you know, that kind of.
That's the hard, that's why you can't always depend on grants because they, it really does depend on who's making the decisions about what gets funded and that changes. So I've seen this all my career, you know, you think they're going in one direction, you invest all this time and energy and then the grant goes away. And then if you've got.
And it's so hard when a grant goes away. I mean, my child, one grant gets cut every year, a little more, a little more, a little more, and you, and you just can just do less and less and less.
It's hard to depend on grants. So, this is great.
So this is a really exciting grant. We're working, um, we're working on redesigning the creativity course. Um, and, and in order to do that, um, what we're going to do is work with Suffolk University to facilitate a partnership with George Moka, who's, um, agreed to work with us. We were excited with, about that.
Put that school store together for us.
Yeah, we're really excited to get working on that. We're, um, working with Creative Education Foundation, um, to train our teachers um, on create, on the creative problem-solving process. They, two of our teachers have been to the, the state conference on creative problem-solving. Um, but this is really designed for teachers and how to reinvent your curriculum using this kind of innovative thinking. So, we're really excited about that. Um, so we're also developing opportunities for, um, field trips for our students to go out and look at the process of how this all works in the working world. Um, and so we'll be updating our courses and units where we've gotten some funding for new technologies and apps that we're gonna be designing and putting into this program and the new creativity showcase for next year, which was a huge hit this year.
It was, it was very successful.
And it was so impressive what the kids were able to do and to see so many parents was so awesome.
It was.
It was so great. And I remember Lisa Ryer, one of the teachers saying, I just don't know if people will come. And it was unbelievable. There were just so many people there. So we're, we're looking at how we can bring in some speakers to that as well and to kind of build that, that program up a little bit more, so. So that'll be exciting. So there's a lot, a lot going on. A lot going on. And, and I'll bring people back to kind of give you more updates as, as we move through that. And this is our, our Camp Invention, uh, for the year, my last slide. This is our Camp Invention, um, theme for the year is illuminate. And, um, I will put this on my website so you can click on some of the links and, and see some of the videos that are associated with Camp Invention. Um, we want our children to be more creative and innovative and have a place to do that. And so for us to offer this for them is, is really exciting for all of us and we hope people take a part of it.
Yeah, it is a cost. There is a cost for it, so, you know, we, we're hoping that.
Oh, there's definitely a cost for that. You know, it's funny, I, we were so excited about it happening. Um, Margaret and I want to send like all the children that we have and our families to it.
Yes, that's right.
So, uh, but it is, it is kind of, it, it is definitely something you wanna look at online and kind of pace out what you're doing with your summer plans, especially, um, you know, cost, being cost-effective is, is our goal. We try to do that as best we can.
So when will you, will you have a price on that?
Everything is up online right now. Um, so right now, if people, if people by March.
It said, yeah, for a discounted rate.
For March twen, by March twentieth, it's, um, two-twenty for, for that week of camp. And, and I think the highest it would go is two-forty-five, but there is like a discount if you register by the twentieth. I just went through and registered my daughter for her camp, same camp, different place.
Oh, funny.
Yeah, uh, same concept, everything. So, um, and it was, it was two- Yeah, uh, same concept, everything, so um, and it was, it was two twenty, so it, it is really truly that cost.
Get some really good feedback on it, won't you?
Oh, I'll have all kinds of feedback on it, well, I was so excited about it, I talked to her principal and she said, oh, well, we're gonna do that too, so. Well, they get to do it, so it's great, uh, but it is a great experience, so just check it out, we'll put it on Margaret's website and we'll put it on mine, it is up there right now, but.
You can put that on Facebook.
But it's going on Facebook.
Yeah, we have worked on a Facebook message and, and that's ready to go out as well, so. Please call us though, if, if people have questions or specifics they would like to know, certainly, welcome to call us anytime.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
So much.
Thank you.
Oh, it's late. So we don't have much more.
I don't have any transfers, was there transfers? I saw in your notes it was transfers, but I don't have any transfers. I thought I was gonna have transfers.
The one that would have transfers, and you have none, then there are none.
I have, um.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
I have three invoices, um, two invoices for the turf field project and one for the fully roof project. Um, I have the warrant cover sheets.
You shouldn't be sitting, you gotta stand up.
I shouldn't be sitting, I should be standing.
So, there's the invoices.
Um, I noticed in the orange notes that.
We all need a sign or just Barbie?
Well, you have to make a motion and then, um, yeah, I need three signatures, but um, the amount of the Georgetown Light Department bill is different. So, um.
All the six oh six?
It's six oh six, it, that was, um, we had outstanding ballots, so they added it to it. For the first, for the first. I don't know if I should say that on TV, but.
Probably nobody's watching at ten o'clock.
Can I do these together?
You can do each warrant together, you're like, you can do each warrant separately, I should say. So you can just approve the warrant for the two bills, I can't talk anymore.
Okay, um. Okay, so the chair will entertain a motion to approve payment of six oh six oh five. To the Georgetown Municipal Light Department as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then the turf field, uh, so what is that for?
That's the last payment on the turf.
Oh, okay. And that's.
Just figure that into the budget.
Yeah, yeah, don't worry, it's in the budget.
I'm channeling John Pinger right now, that's not an expense, I thought we were done with everything.
No, cause I had the Quirk Outstanding Contract in that little spreadsheet I made.
Okay, the chair will entertain a motion to approve, um. Payment of Quirk Construction Invoice Number Five Three One Dash O Eight, dated January thirtieth, twenty fifteen. In the amount of four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars as presented.
So moved, second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And then the chair will entertain a motion to approve, um, payment of CBI Consulting Invoice. Number Two Two Eight One Two, dated January twenty-seventh, twenty fifteen, in the amount of two thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars as presented.
So moved, second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Yeah.
Why don't you go, John? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you.
So that you're back and you can recover.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. These are just some side letters of agreement that are coming up next, I know.
Right. Oh, the Anime Club Advisor Stipend, yep, yes, okay, so the chair will entertain a motion to approve the side letter of agreement. For the Anime Club Advisor Stipend to the amount of one thousand four hundred and twelve dollars for the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen school year.
So moved, second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, okay, then we have homeschool. Families, the list.
Oh, so I, I asked Laura about this, cause I was a little surprised to see this, and Laura said that Donna updates, Donna updates the list periodically. And this is just the most recent updated list.
Um, so it doesn't necessarily mean we have added.
No, this is just the updated list.
Just a, okay, okay. Um, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the list of homeschool families as of January twenty-ninth, twenty fifteen, as presented by Dr. Donis.
So moved.
Why does it say two thousand seven, two thousand eight? Where? Oh, at the top.
Oh, I, I don't know why it would say that.
That's just the headings. Oh, yeah, the heading's wrong on one side.
That's a, that's a blast from the past, though, we should definitely adjust that. We won't, I don't think you should hold up the vote on it, but we should definitely make an adjustment, I don't know how that slipped in there.
I just.
How about the, um. I understand why, few years have passed since that, since that.
I looked at those kids, like, how old are those kids?
Do you have a question about that Barbie?
No, I'm just doing the same thing, looking, I'm like, oh, were they, I thought they were, this was wrong, but this information was all right, but it's not.
Right. What's not right, I'm sorry.
No, so I thought just the heading was wrong.
Yeah.
But it's, it, it is all the, um, ages and stuff of the children.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, I'm not gonna hold up the vote for that, thank you for changing that, Laura.
We'll make the change on it.
Do you want a second thought?
Second.
Okay, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Um, and then we have the light donation.
Yes, you know how Teddy Costusek was working on that project, and it was awesome at the play, because it really was, it really made a difference.
Which, by the way, the play was fantastic.
It wasn't the play.
Oh, my gosh.
Normally Vanessa would have.
Oh, yeah, well, we'll let Vanessa talk about it the next time, but she had a big heart.
She did.
She did, she, she had a singing, she really, she did awesome. She really was good, so, you know, one, so they, you know, they had different, thank you, John, they had different sources of funds that he had gotten, as you know. He would get ten thousand from the GEF and some money from a grant, but when the municipal light department heard about the, you know, raising funds. They said, well, we'd like to help, we'd like to do something, how much do you, you know, how much could this help you, and so basically, they donated four thousand dollars and. Four thousand eighty dollars, and that just allowed Teddy to complete the, the major part of what he wanted to do. So I just wanna make sure that we acknowledge Dave and the Georgetown Municipal Light Department for that generous donation.
Yeah, that was very massive, fantastic, yeah.
And I was so, I was so happy to support Teddy, cause it really, Teddy just believed so much, he's a senior this year, so, you know, for him to be able to leave feeling like, wow, I made a difference in my.
You know what's interesting with that whole thing is, um, I sent his mother an email after I read the letter, read it, read the paper. About the article with Teddy, and I just said, I just wanted to tell you what a great job he did, and how great he was when he came to the school committee and, and told us all about it. And when she emailed me back, I couldn't believe everything that went into it.
I know.
I mean, I thought it was a lot of work, when she listed out how he went to all the vendors and priced them out, and. I mean, it was like ten different things that this student did beyond his own. Schoolwork and everything, I, I said, wow, I don't think people realized how much time he put into it, it was a lot.
And he was, it's just, he was so passionate about it, and he got up actually at the play initially, and he, and he basically talked about. How the, he thanked the light department, and he talked about a little bit about the project and how the lights were new, and what they got out of the fund, he thanked the GEF. And they said, you know, if people wanna continue to donate, there are other things we, you know, we wanna do, but, you know, he just got right up there and, you know. I mean, he's just got an amazing amount of poise and maturity, and, and he so, so believes in. You know, this, the, the, you know, the, the area of technology and arts and, just amazing, he's a great kid.
Well, um, okay, so the chair will entertain a motion to accept the donation of four thousand eighty dollars from the Georgetown Municipal Light. Department, um, thank you for your generosity.
Yes, so moved, second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I just, I did forget this, uh, this side letter for the, um, the chair will entertain a motion to. Prove the side letter for the Anti-Bullying Club Advisor Stipend in the amount of one thousand four hundred and twelve dollars for the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen school year.
So moved, second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that was a club that came from the suggestion of the kids.
Of a child.
The kids set that up.
Okay, uh, subcommittee reports.
Really?
I know, I know.
Is there anything really pressing?
Negotiating, met last night, uh, we're meeting again March, I think, twelfth.
Yeah, I live until twelfth, so it's one in that.
On March eighteenth, I think it is.
Let me, I think I got that written down, March eighteenth, it is my.
Things are going, things are going well, so we're, we're meeting, um, I got your update, budget and finance, we went all over that.
Yeah, we went through all of that, we met on February third, so, and then we had a governance meeting on the twenty-second, so we're still working on the concussion policy. Domestic violence and discipline, so we've got some legal reviews associated with that, and we have to do another review of concussion.
And actually, we got information on both of those, so we definitely, like the, the, uh, our attorney gave us, uh, uh, revisions. On the domestic violence, and I contacted Mike Gilbert and asked him for the most updated. Uh, policies MASC might have regarding the new discipline law, and he sent me copies of all those, so those are in that packet, Lorraine, that, that you have the governance packet. That we can look at next time we meet.
Okay. Great.
Okay, um, I read your update about the school building.
The school building, um, yeah, sure, the, the high school is, um, coming along, we've identified ten possible general contractors. And, um, the bids are due on March twelfth, and the award will be in April, um.
How long is the, um, gym gonna take, I know it starts April vacation, when is, is?
When is it gonna be done?
I thought it was gonna be done by the, by the summer, but, you know.
By the end of the summer?
No, no, I thought it was gonna be done by the beginning of summer, cause there's a lot of other summer work that's gonna happen, but, you know.
Okay.
I think if we looked at the schedule, I think the reason for starting it in April is because they wanna get a head start on that. And they're basically resurf- refinishing the floor. Implementing, uh, putting in new bleachers that are of different structure, creating a new storage closet. You know, moving that storage closet and then repainting the floor, re, restriping, I guess they call it, restriping the floor.
And somebody's gonna repair that, um, piece of wood along the wall that holds up the flags.
Well, Pete, no, actually, Chris is getting new banners, Chris is figuring out the new banner thing, he's, he's gonna.
Are the walls being painted?
Uh, that, I'm not sure, but I can't imagine they wouldn't be, I think all those banners are coming down, but what Chris wants to do is like, he might put like. Girls Feel Talky, and then, you know, the, instead of having, you know, they, let's say they won the, you know, K-Pan League five times. Well, it'll list the five years on one banner, as opposed to every individual, I think so much more organized that way.
That sounds nice, but I can find out if the next, um.
Yeah, I'm sure it is being painted, I can't imagine they would take it down.
Right, but like, when the gym is projected to be finished.
That would be great, um, thank you.
Okay, and then Pembroke is going to be substantially completed by the end of May, we've talked a lot about that today. Um, in one month, the FF and E Furniture Fixtures and Equipment, uh, procurement will begin. Wes, uh, our Director of Technology, Wes Vaughn, came in and, and spoke about the, the plans. Um, you know, the goal is to have a coordinated and consistent technology plan in place for pre-K through twelve. Um, and the Technology Committee is working very hard at that, and that will be finished in June. Um, the Technology Committee meetings are open, you know, open meetings, I, I went to the last one, it was very interesting, um. Liz Marquette had done a, a survey of teachers at, at the, all the schools to find out, you know, what areas of technology they're comfortable with, they know about. They want to, um, they want to see more of, it was, it was a very helpful survey, um. So. Really, it's a, we're on, we're on schedule, on budget, both in good shape, the quilts have been dry cleaned and fire treated, the repairs have been made to the third floor of linoleum. Um, we put pictures on Facebook, new pictures of the interior, and a couple of them were of the gym there, and, oh my gosh, my. My boys were so excited to see that gym, they were like, mom, when can we go in there, we wanna go in there.
Yeah, it's, it's beautiful, it's a wood floor, and, um, in, on the, on the, you know, the edges of the gym, there's, you know, there's always a, a. An apron around it, and so in wood, inlaid wood, says Pembroke on one side, and then Georgetown on the other side.
Oh, that's neat, like a football field does.
It's just stunning, it's just, it's stunning.
It's gonna be lovely.
People will see that, and, and it is, um, not such good news. The, uh, we, we lost a week due to the snow cleanup, but that's kind of immaterial, uh, because we've been ahead of schedule.
Yeah.
Um, the terrazzo floors arrived, we have some color issues, we will be resolving those. Um, sun shade end piece at the end may need to be redesigned a little bit, we're gonna look at an alternate.
It was not letting.
So what, it's like an oning, you're saying?
Kinda like an oning, but it wasn't letting the snow through, but we don't know if it's just because there's an exorbitant amount of snow this year.
Right.
Um, but they're looking at the design, because it should, it should go through.
The committee was not comfortable with that, so, yeah, we'll be addressing that in the future.
Definitely paying very close attention to those kind of things, yeah.
Yes, and the next meeting will be on February twenty-fourth, and then March tenth.
Okay.
So the March meeting mi- might end up starting with a tour, so we can, we can maybe, you can maybe bring that up to accordingly with the, with the, uh. You know, with the, um, committee, so the, the school committee can be invited to.
Yeah, and then last time.
And actually, the Board of Selectmen would probably wanna come.
Yeah, that would be nice.
And actually, you'd really be in good shape then, you'd see, most everything's gonna be completed, we're talking about substantial completion in May, so. You know, there, there's probably a, a lot that will be done in March, finished in March.
And I did wanna say too, that tonight, the, um, the kids left for France.
I know, they did.
Yeah, yeah, they left tonight, so, well, they were planning on leaving at like eight, I think, so I'm sure, I, I, yeah, so I can't wait to hear how. That goes, and I'm sure, I'm sure they'll have a great time.
I think that, I asked Peter about it, there were originally twenty-six people, I think twenty-four going, one, uh, the two people. Uh, who aren't, are, were a, a child and their parent, the parent must have been going as well, and they determined that it wasn't really something they wanted to do. But they got the credit, so they, they worked, you know, we worked out that credit situation, so they'll have an opportunity to go at another time, and. You know, they got some cash refunds, part of it, they were refunding in cash, so.
Oh, that's good, everything worked out.
Four out of twenty-six were signed up to go.
I talked to, um, Miss Arigo yesterday, and she was all excited to go, so.
Well, things have, I mean, it's always unstable, a little bit, they're not, we're not worrying about things in the same way at the peak like we were, you know, that. When we were talking about this, it was very emotional, cause it was.
Sure.
Really scary in that era, every day, every time you turn.
You haven't really heard much, I'm sure they'll have a great time.
I'm sure they'll have a great time.
And I think, you know, the, the, um, kid's safety and the, the staff safety was paramount. Paramount for us, so, um.
Yeah, and then, you know, making the change, slight change in the itinerary.
Yeah, I'm sure they'll come back with some great stories, so, I wish them well.
Very great.
Um, I think that's it.
Okay.
So the, uh, there is no, uh, need for an executive session this evening, so the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn at ten sixteen PM.
So moved, second.
All in, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you, good night.
Thank you, thanks for watching. Stay safe, drive carefully.